I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Here.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. LaFever?
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the Constitution under God, indivisible, for clarity and justice for all.
We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education enter a closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Okay, if we could come back to order, we have a suggested motion that the Board return to open session. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Stain.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
First item of business is recognitions. Tonight, we have our National Merit Scholars. Turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Small.
Thank you. Now that the limit is 25 in our space, Associate Superintendent Mark Kovak has created four recognition segments. Each group will enter and be recognized with their principal. We are proud to have these students here tonight representing this year's 30 National Merit Scholars.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Small, administrators, faculty, and honored guests. Last month, I presented 16 District 211 students to you for recognition as National Merit Scholars. Tonight, we continue the recognition with 14 additional students who have achieved this distinction. Adhering to health and safety protocols, we will recognize the students in four separate groups. I want to remind you that the National Merit Scholarship Program has been honoring our country's most academically talented students for more than 60 years based upon their performance on the PSAT NMSQT exam that students elect to take during the fall of their junior year in high school. These students with us tonight join an exclusive group of just 16,000 high school students nationwide to earn the title National Merit Semi-finalist, representing the top 1% of American high school students. Each of the four from high school students I'm about to present has been provided with District 211's Robert Creek Excellence Award, named in honor of Robert Creek, who served District 211 as a board member for 20 years, 19 of those as board presidents. Students, as I call your name, please raise your hand to be recognized, and parents, as I call your child's name, please raise your hand also so we can recognize you for supporting your child's pursuit of excellence. As you can imagine, many of these students are involved in a variety of community-wide activities, and so I do anticipate that some of them may not be here with us this evening. I'm going to call all of their names just so we can publicly recognize them. First, Ethan Lynn. Michelle Lu. Angela Ma. And Mahima Mahacho. I congratulate each of you on this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you for joining us this evening. Please exit the auditorium so that we can bring in the next group. I'm pleased to present another group of from high school students who have achieved National Merit Scholar Semi-finalist status based upon their outstanding performance on last year's PSAT NMSQT exam, taken when they were juniors. These students join that selective group of high-achieving high schoolers who, for each of the past 60 years, have been honored for being among the top 1% of high school students in the nation's upcoming graduating class. Each of these students has also been provided with District 211's Robert Creek Excellence Award. Students, as I call your name, please raise your hand to be recognized, and parents, please raise your hand also so we can recognize you for supporting your child in their pursuit of excellence. Gavin McCarthy. Gwendolyn Niketa. David Phillips. And Jessica Robb. I congratulate each of you on this outstanding accomplishment, and thank you for joining us this evening. I would ask that you please exit the auditorium so that we can bring in our next group. Looks like a small group this time. This is another from high school student who has achieved the National Merit Scholar Semi-finalist status based upon performance on last year's PSAT NMSQT exam, and now joins part of that tradition that has spanned over 60 years to honor the top 1% of American high school students. Again, we have presented the Robert Creek Award to the students here with us this evening. I do have four names, and I'm not sure who is with us this evening, so I'm going to call all of them. Sophia Shazier. Thank you. We have three other from high school students who I would like to acknowledge. Rachel Yee. Angelina Zayn. And William Zhang. Congratulations on your accomplishment, and thank you for joining us this evening. I ask you to please exit the auditorium so that we can bring in our last group. These two District 211 students have also achieved National Merit Scholar Semi-finalist status based upon their performance on the PSAT NMSQT exam. In total this year, 30 District 211 students earned the distinction, joining the highly selected group of high-achieving learners who, for each of the past 60 years, have attained this status and represent the top 1% of American high school students. We honor them all for their dedication to academic excellence. Both students you're about to meet have been provided with the Robert Creek Excellence Award. Students, as I call your name, please raise your hand to be recognized, and parents, raise your hand also so that we can recognize you for supporting your child. From Palatine High School, Marietta Bergam. And from Schaumburg High School, Mia Volkmer. Congratulations to each of you on this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.
That's our only group coming in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, our next item of business tonight is public comments. According to the Restore Illinois Resurgence Mitigations issued by the State of Illinois, no more than 25 individuals may be gathered together in a specific location at one time. The Board of Education meeting will be held in the auditorium at Hoffman Estates High School with a maximum of 25 individuals. The Board meeting will be simulcast in classrooms near the auditorium to accommodate any additional guests beyond the auditorium capacity. Tonight, public comments will be in person and via Zoom. Individuals who wanted to address the Board via in-person or Zoom were asked to sign up today between the hours of 4:30 p.m. and 6:30 p.m. Individuals were asked to indicate if they wanted to address the Board of Education in person or via Zoom. If more than 20 people completed the link to address the Board, a random system was used to select and order 30 names. Since public comment is to be heard for a maximum of one hour, not all 30 people may have a chance to address the Board. A list of individuals who will address the Board and the order of the individuals addressing the Board was posted on the Zoom meeting screen at 7:15 p.m. Each person who addresses the Board will have a maximum of five minutes to speak. You will be told when you have one minute remaining, though you may not hear that if you are speaking via Zoom. Public comment will be heard for a maximum of one hour. I will call each person's name when it is their time to address the Board. If you are in person, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. If you are addressing the Board via Zoom, your microphone will be turned on after I call your name. Again, please state your name for the record, and if you wish, indicate if you are a resident of the district. When you are finished, your microphone will be turned off. Speakers, please keep your masks on when addressing the Board at the podium. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. First person tonight, Kristin Steele.
Good evening. So this is now the third time I have stood before you all to address the concerns I have for this district, for our children, and I can say that it is ever so clear to me that the Board has failed to strategically direct this administration. The district is operating with the community elected oversight. Decisions are being made without empathy for the community it serves. As I understand, the Board of Education takes an oath when sworn in. There are several points to that oath which an elected member agrees to abide by. There are two points of this that really struck me when I was reading them. The first is, "I shall strive to ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children in compliance with the state law." It has been made very clear over the past several months that the priority of our youth education, mental health, and general well-being, are absolutely not being met by our school Board or administration. In fact, it is severely lacking. I know that we have seen presentations about teachers and the wonderful work they do, but we have yet to hear from a single parent of a D-211 student that this is working, that their child is flourishing. Some of you said at last month's meeting that the remote learning is working great, that it's a testament to the large percentage that chose it. It was actually Ms. Cavill and Mr. Rosenblum who said that, but I can assure you that that's not true. The Board is elected to serve the community and represent the parents, not the teachers. As well, the Board is to hold the administration accountable, and it is that accountability that seems to be lacking. I emailed Dr. Small and the Board on September 22nd, received a response on September 24th that was very generic regarding metrics needing to be followed by IDPH, and the response did not have the specific information I was looking for. I also emailed the Board of Education regarding this and received one response from Mr. Dombrowski. That's it. I emailed on 10/30 regarding the VIP photography contract with very specific action items of request, and response to a FOIA that did not give me the information I was looking for, and still have not received a response. Dr. Small, I am looking for an answer as to why you would recommend to approve VIP contract when they should clearly not be an approved vendor for what they did and the impending lawsuit a family has against them. There have been FOIA's submitted for grades and attendance that did not match numbers in several updates. Attendance has dropped and fill grades has increased. Again, remote learning is not working, but this lack of transparency and accountability is again very concerning. The next portion of the oath the Board takes is, "I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who speak a hearing before the Board while respecting the privacy of students and employees." Last meeting, I sat in the audience, appalled at how the Board voted not even to add an agenda item for discussion that Mr. Kramer brought forth. Encourage and respect the free expression of opinion. That's the part of the oath, and you all could not even vote to put this as a discussion point for this evening's meeting. This is disturbing and truly sheds a light on how this Board is divisive and does not have the community and students as a priority. So I'm going to close with this. I'm asking for follow-ups. I want to know the end game, the plan to move towards in-person learning. I don't want Springfield or erroneous and unobtainable regurgitation of IDPH metrics sent to me. I want a plan. Our youth deserve a plan.
You have one now.
The Board is elected to represent the community, parents, taxpayers, and there has been zero discussion of the end game and what you all are working to accomplish to get our kids in school. Does not seem like even a priority. The governor is not helping. IDPH is not helping. They're not going to help. They are not interested in helping. Our children can be in school. There are districts doing this in our state, there are districts and millions of kids in school in other states. Figure it out and quit waiting for someone to tell you how to do it. There's enough smart people around here, I believe, that can figure it out. Figure out ways to do other things in person as well, like National Honor Society. There's no reason that cannot be in person. Why is it not a top priority to give our youth something to look forward to, something to strive for? I would like an answer to this. The bottom line is this: We need to take care of our own community. We pay our property taxes directly to this district, a lot of money, and as of the past nine months, we are not getting any sort of positive ROI. It is time to change course. Open your eyes and get to work.
Your time is ended.
Thank you.
Karen Powers.
Good evening. My name is Karen Powers. I have a sophomore at Hoffman Estates High School. Dr. Small, I emailed you on November 3rd asking why a full-day curriculum is not being considered for the second semester of hybrid learning. I have not received a response. Two-thirds of the curriculum is currently being taught. As a taxpayer of this district, my expectation is and should be 100%. I would appreciate a written explanation addressing this. The chatter amongst students and teachers is the pivot from hybrid to remote after Thanksgiving and for the remainder of the semester, and it's not because of COVID cases. The teachers will be traveling against IDPH guidelines to see family, and when they return, they will have to quarantine for two weeks and teach remotely. This will in turn cause a staffing problem for D-211, and it appears to be the new narrative among other districts as well. The very teachers who are too afraid to return to the classrooms are apparently not afraid to travel to see grandma and grandpa. I often hear about how teachers want the kids back in the classroom but refuse to follow the IDPH guidelines shoved in our faces on a daily basis. Are teachers required to use sick time for their quarantine since this is a voluntary choice to disregard the IDPH guidelines? I would appreciate a written response to this question as well, Dr. Small. I am also calling on teachers to contact their union to end what feels like a hostage situation. D-211 teachers are among the best. I am asking you to stand up for our children. I know you want your students back in the classroom. It's time to move forward and restore the normalcy for them. This has never been about safety of the students or staff. Political games continue to be played with our children. Dr. Small and the board members, I don't believe you have the best interest of the students in mind. I believe Dr. Small overwhelmingly sympathize and supports the teachers' unions. I don't believe she is concerned for our district's students or teachers. I have sat through numerous Board meetings and I have watched you sit on this stage without emotion as we make our pleas for the mental health of our children. The administration nor the Board has made mention of the suicide of a 14-year-old student from our district. Most of you look like you're ready to fall asleep. Some of you never even look at the parents when we are speaking. I witnessed a board member fiddling with her pen in annoyance when a parent was speaking. There is no respect among the board members, and the tension is obvious. Vague, random comments are made to each other, leaving the attendees scratching their heads. At October's meeting, Ms. Cavill actually spoke to the quality of remote learning because 43% chose it. This was after a student got up here and spoke about what is actually taking place during remote learning, and in short, it is cheating. Maybe we can discuss the 17-year-old Conet student that logged off his remote learning to commit a homicide in the middle of a school day. But I look forward to tonight's Equity Presentation and how you intend to bridge the widening gap brought on by this ridiculousness. Lastly, I'll throw some numbers your way. The virus has a 99% survival rate, the case fatalities is less than 2% in our state, and in the last three months alone, it is .9%.
You have one now, what?
Compared to the first three months of the pandemic when it was 4.9. You will never speak of these numbers, you will never speak of how doctors are now effectively treating the virus, or that we are on the brink of releasing a 90% effective vaccine. You would rather solely focus on the number of cases, which is actually driving the death rate down and the survival rate up. Common sense no longer resides in this room. Schools across this state are in person and are teaching a full curriculum. Those teachers, administrators, and school boards are heroes in my book along with every single working American. They are not crippled with fear or politics. They know the importance of our children's mental health and education. Dr. Small, I look forward to hearing from you regarding my concerns brought forth tonight. Thank you.
Lori Greenowee.
Kathy?
Lori, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Lori Greenowee. I am the lead of Women's Voters, Harvard University, Mount Cass, at Cal Poly. Before I leave Harvard University, I'll pray my children to rest back in their elementary school. I am here to ask the Board to vote to approve IASB Resolution 2 by the 2020 meeting. This resolution aligns the Lee's Position on Guns, which states in part that we believe the elimination of handguns and semi-unmanned weapons in the United States will major help and safety threats to the citizen. Teen suicide events and school shooters are headlines involving multiple boys. Resolution 2 is simple staff leading safety and is a way of self-help. Resolution 2 will align Illinois child safety gun stores laws with laws covering the middle age, 2% to 7%. Current Illinois law, half-day gun, applies only to persons under the age of 14 might access to the firearm, middle-aged, or purchase firearms with 18. School shooters are typically current or former shootings between the ages of 13 and 21, with the majority being 14, 15, 16, and 17 years old. As you can see from the chart I'm looking at, that is then, among school shootings, the shooter obtains about their family, a friend, or relatives who left it unsecured. Under current law, the act of murder cannot be called a disbarment, should a teen 14, 15, 16, or 17 commit a crime using a non-stated gun. Unfortunately, the resolutions committee voted that do not approve this position on Resolution 2. The reasons given for the do not approve include that IASB did not have legislative resources to support such a resolution, and the IASB typically only deals with issues affecting the school district. A school shooter is in the district. The shooter is in the school. Regarding legislation, there are many lawful prevention groups in Illinois, including the Women's Voters, ready to support this legislative change, endorsed by the IASB with help of their lobbying efforts. Additionally, I'd like to ask you to vote for the Accrude Police Statement proposed by the Indian Prairie School District 204. Lee's Position on Diversity, Accrude, and Equality Statutes in Part. The federal government shared, part of another multiple governments, the responsibility to provide equality and opportunity for education and employment. School districts have largest social services for wider enough community, and to achieve the ideal for our founders, we must begin with schools. I am the advocate of the Women's Voters, Harvard University, Mount Prospect, Upland Road, including Positife, Eltonville, and Bailey. I beg you. If you have any talk, you can reach me at the Melwack I.D. Thank you very much.
Joyce Slavik.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavik. I'm the parent of two students at from high school. I'm also here to request that the Board join with other local school boards, including D-15 and 220, to support Resolution 2 related to gun stores legislation at the IASB Delegate Assembly this weekend. Resolution 2 simply asks the IASB members to support efforts to strengthen child safe gun storage laws that would require gun owners to safely store firearms in a lock container if anyone under the age of 18 who did not have permission would have access to the firearm. Current Illinois law only applies to children under the age of 14. Please note that free gun locks are available at local police stations, including Palatine. In 2020, the number of gun deaths so far in the United States is 37,182, of which almost 21,000 were suicides. The number of children killed or injured by guns up to age 11 is 852. For teens 12 to 17, the number is 3,470. These numbers are from gunbalancearchive.org as of this week. Research shows that strong child access prevention laws decrease unintentional shootings, suicides, and school shootings. Approximately 80% of guns used in school shootings by shooters under 18 were taken from their own home or homes of friends and relatives. 25% of gun owners report storing their guns in unlocked locations, and 4.6 million minors live in homes with loaded unlocked firearms. Children are impulsive, and giving them the means to harm themselves or others in the community is not acceptable. Suicide attempts with firearms are almost always lethal, while most people who have attempted suicide do not attempt it again. These are a lot of numbers, big numbers, but behind all these numbers are dead children. Somebody's child, somebody's grandson. Somebody's child, somebody's grandchild, another child's brother or sister, our students. We have a responsibility as adults to protect children from accidental or intentional harm. We must provide adequate mental health resources, but we must also keep guns out of kids' hands to keep them from harming themselves or others in the community. We do traumatizing lockdown drills. Let's make sure those drills do not become realities in our schools. Schools will not be expected to enforce this legislation, just as they don't have the responsibility to enforce current legislation. But having them supported would go a long way to saving more kids' lives. Resolution 2 has everything to do with the safety of students in schools. Every school board in Illinois should be concerned about the safety of students and therefore should vote to support Resolution 2. It just makes sense. And separately, I do want to thank you for your cautious, science-based approach to in-person learning. It is absolutely not ideal, but this is a raging pandemic and we know that it's certainly surging right now. Thank you.
Stacy Gale.
Hi, my name is Stacy Gale. I'm a resident of Hoffman Estates, a D-21 parent. Since the last D-21 board meeting on October 15th, there have been zero deaths due to COVID-19 in the communities served by 211 for those under age 60. Unfortunately, there's been an additional suicide and a homicide committed by a 17-year-old Conant student. The 17-year-old Conant student shot a 20-year-old male in the face and killed him. According to news reports, the 17-year-old logged off e-learning around 10:30 a.m., went to the victim's home and shot him in the face. This homicide resulted in the death of a 20-year-old and the end of a 17-year-old's life as he knows it. When will this administration and board begin to make decisions that will keep our community safe? When considering the best interest of the community, you must consider more than just COVID-19. In our community, people under 60 are dying from suicide, drug overdoses, and crime, not COVID-19. As community spread is said to be on the rise, I ask you to continue to offer students and staff a safe facility to learn and work. It is safest for students to be in person in a facility which enforces all the mitigation guidelines such as six-foot social distance, masks, and frequent sanitation. Our facilities are not sources of community spread and are one of the safest options for both students and teachers. I've heard rumblings the district may be facing operational difficulties due to teachers teaching remotely and students needing supervision due to a temporary remote teaching allowance. I'm asking the district to remain flexible in your efforts to continue to provide in-person opportunities. If teachers are being allowed to teach remotely on a temporary basis, combine classes and utilize a single proctor for multiple classes if needed. I realize this is not an ideal situation, but the district is asking families to figure out how to have multiple family members on Zoom in the same household at once. If students can be at home with family members on Zoom, they can certainly be in a classroom with other Zoom participants who aren't in their class. As a parent and taxpayer, I would like guidance on how to facilitate communication with administration. I've made public comments multiple times, each time asking for a response and receiving none. I've emailed seeking information just to receive a response. Submit a FOIA. Is this how it's supposed to work? Is the administration simply allowed to repeatedly ignore a community member's request for information and clarification? If the superintendent's job does not include communicating with taxpayers and parents, whose is it? If the superintendent is supposed to answer questions from taxpayers and parents, whose job is it to hold the superintendent accountable for those duties? I've emailed Andy DeRozan, District 54, several times over the past few months, and he's always responded to my inquiries. As a matter of fact, I emailed him yesterday and he called me shortly after noon today. He started our conversation with an apology because it took him almost 24 hours. I was stunned by his response and grateful. I scratched my head, wondering, is he just that much better at his job? Or is his board better at holding him accountable? I know it's not typical for the board or administration to respond to public comment, but I would appreciate it if Mr. Muthliffever or Dr. Small would take the time at this meeting tonight to explain to the community, who is responsible for addressing community members' concerns? What is a reasonable timeline for a response? And what to do if there is no response? Dr. Small, could you please provide some more information?
Time is ended?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Howard Keer.
Hi, I'm Howard Keer, Schaumburg High School parent, graduate, and two, one who is a freshman and one who is a senior. As a mostly retired professional photographer who owned a photography studio, was a member of Professional Photographers of America and other local photography associations, and earned my Certified Professional Photographer designation, I'd like to provide some insight and personal commentary about yearbook photography. Since 2014, when my oldest child became a freshman at Schaumburg High School, I have had the opportunity to observe visual image photographers in action and critique their results. Since then, I have seen way too many photos from VIP which would never have passed inspection at my studio. Photos have been improperly cropped, poorly located, framed, or retouched. Flash reflections in eyeglasses, poor poses, and more. In as many cases as possible, I've asked them to fix the problem and met resistance until I proved my expertise to them. As a photographer, I can certainly understand the challenges and the occasional unacceptable image. It happens. Somebody blinks, a bystander's camera flash interferes with your photo, somebody moves, a light misfires, etc. That is one of the reasons why we take multiple pictures. However, when you have a photographer who has not learned the needed skills, just doesn't care, or a studio with high volume and insufficient photographer oversight, the percentage of poor images increases. For yearbook photos, many parents just don't know how a good portrait should appear. Therefore, poor yearbook photography is allowed to continue. Years before I became a D-21 parent, I started working with Michelle Musman in an attempt to make Illinois an open yearbook state. That is, as long as the photos met specific standards set by the school district, anybody could submit yearbook photos. Students would no longer be required to have yearbook photos taken by the company the school district contracted with. Unfortunately, this legislation faltered. While I've not reviewed VIP's contract with D-21 specifically, I suspect it is similar to many school photographers' contracts I've seen, which state the contracted photographer is the exclusive source of yearbook photos and provides a sales commission to the school district. This needlessly increases the cost to D-21 families and allows VIP an inside track to the lucrative senior photography business. Not many parents or students are aware that they can have VIP take their yearbook photo at no charge and then have their senior photos taken by another studio. I have long railed against these anti-competitive, anti-consumer, anti-parent monopoly contracts which lock out small, local photography businesses in favor of large, out-of-town corporations. VIP will continue to be D-21's sole yearbook photographer until either somebody else wins the contract, goes out of business. Illinois law forces open contracts where you, the board, does the same. Please feel free to contact me should you need any additional information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is in the auditorium tonight who is not on the list who would like to address the board? If so, if you could just raise your hand, please. Okay, that concludes the public comment portion of the meeting. Next item on our agenda is presentations. Tonight, we have a presentation Equity and Professional Learning. Dr. Small, if you'd like to make any introductions, please.
I will. You need a minute to transition.
Sure.
As the people are in the audience right now. If you'd like to watch in the simulcast room during the presentation, you are more than welcome. After the presentation, I will ask the principals to leave and anyone who's in the simulcast room, as long as we're under eight people, can enter at that time. For the direction of the Board of Education, from the October board meeting, Assistant Superintendent Schumacher, Palatine High School Principal Medina, and Hoffman Estates High School Principal-Author, who was also administrator at Palatine High School last year, will be presenting the multi-year professional development work of Palatine High School, including the use of the COVID Gary Howard's Deep Equity Material. The principals of all schools will be involved in the presentation to highlight for the board and the community the professional development they have also led within their schools.
Tonight, we have the opportunity to share with you part of the educational equity journey that our District 21 schools have started in an effort to implement the systematic change process that is necessary to transform us into a culturally equitable school district. Over the past several years, we have built a solid foundation and continue to grow in our commitment to ensure educational equity for all students. Our past and continued success is linked with both the individual and the collective commitment of our staff, students, parents, and of course, you as our Board of Education. We know that equity is different from equality and can only be achieved when all students receive what they need, when they need it, so that they are career, college, and life-ready. As we seek to promote equity across our schools, we are reminded that the challenge of educational equity is formidable. It requires research, collaboration with professionals, and personal reflection. We are, however, committed to long-term systematic improvement in both the support of and the achievement of our students. There are certain foundational assumptions to our equity work across District 21. The first is that equity is not simply an initiative. It isn't something that we work on for a little bit because it's relevant or new. Our work has been a journey to integrate an equity mindset into our lives, our schools, and our community. As we have worked to integrate this mindset, themes have emerged, both about the current reality of our schools and about what we strive to become as school communities. We have sought to use equity as a lens through which we can develop and analyze our impact while also planning our next steps. Our collective journey started with thousands of individual, deeply personal journeys. Each of us in this room, and our current 12,000 students, and our 2,000 staff members, have put our identity and our lived experience at the center of the journey. Similar to your experience in the IASB equity training weeks ago, the work of our schools is deeply personal, sometimes uncomfortable, but above all, necessary to ensure that every single student in District 21 is provided the tools and support that they need to be successful. Usually, we would set the stage for the why behind the need for continued equity work. I'm thankful that I don't need to do that tonight because you are also involved and committed to providing equitable educational environments in District 21. We do want to, however, highlight some aspects of our community that we believe will help frame our work, namely, our students. This connects to our second foundational assumption, which is the need to utilize scholarly research, direct evidence, and data to create short-term and long-term strategies. Before you tonight, there are some snapshots of student data that we know to be true of our community. First, in the last 10 years, the number of students who live in poverty has increased by 57% at Palatine High School. Second, in the last 10 years, the number of white students at Hoffman Estates High School has decreased by 29%, while at the same time, the number of Hispanic students has increased by 40%. In the last five years, the number of students in households who do not speak English has increased 200% to include 386 ESL students this year at Palatine High School. This year, the white population no longer represents the majority at Conant High School or Schaumburg High School. And there are 52 different home languages spoken in the homes of Front High School students, making up a large percentage of the 79 home languages that are spoken in homes across all of District 21. We have used this data and included in-depth research to frame both short-term and long-term strategies and solutions to ensure that all students, especially those students from typically underrepresented groups, are fully supported. More than that, though, we want all students to feel safe, welcome, and valued in our schools, no matter their ethnicity, race, gender, sexual orientation, dominant language, disability, family background, or family income. As you can see and as you learn during your training, equity is not simply a goal that we work towards. It is an educational imperative that seeks to support our entire community. To accomplish this requires us to adopt a strengths-based approach, which is another foundational assumption of equity work. This approach focuses on the strengths, not the deficits, of individuals, families, groups, and our collective community. Let me be clear, equity work is not easy work. It requires a growth mindset, the willingness to be comfortable being uncomfortable, and the posture to challenge yourself about your past and current belief structures. Tonight, we have the opportunity to share with you a window into the work that has been accomplished in our District 21 schools. The work is courageous work, and I want to publicly show our shared appreciation for every staff member, board member, student, and parent who have participated in moving us forward. For tonight's presentation, you have the opportunity to hear about Palatine High School's work with a concept called Deep Equity. This work, which was thoroughly researched and selected, is a comprehensive and systematic professional development process aimed at producing the deep, personal, professional, and organizational transformation that are necessary to create equitable places of learning for all of our students. It's based on the work by researcher and educator Gary Howard. While there are many different components to Mr. Howard's research, you will hear how this capacity-building program was both purposefully chosen and carefully adapted or piratized to help Palatine students and staff dismantle disparities through sustained collaborative efforts and courageous leadership. We would be remiss tonight if we also didn't provide you the opportunity to hear about equity work, which is happening in all of our District 21 schools. We have chosen to also include information about a deeply impactful simulation that Conant High School staff participated in that not only changed mindsets, but literally changed the trajectory of Conant's student support system. Schaumburg High School Principal Brian Harland will share with you how Student Voice has been leading the equity work at Schaumburg. Their work to center school improvement efforts directly in the actual student experience has allowed staff to tailor programs and initiatives based on what diverse students both perceive and directly experience at Schaumburg High School. You will also hear about Front High School's work to integrate trauma-informed practices into every facet of the student experience. They have identified strategies and supports that reduce discrimination, empower students to overcome barriers, and thrive both socially, emotionally, and academically. By integrating social-emotional learning, a trauma-informed mindset, and equity as a core component, they have actually multiplied the effort of their work and thus multiplied the achievement of all their students. Finally, you will hear about the journey of Hoffman Estates High School through which staff have committed to the identification, recruitment, and support of students who are typically underrepresented in rigorous coursework, but, as we learned earlier, actually represent the majority of the student body. This critical work, which has implications for students long after their time in District 21, includes an analysis of student mindsets towards Hoffman Estates High School. includes an analysis of student mindsets towards Hoffman Estates High School, towards rigorous coursework, and towards their own academic abilities and skills. Students are then paired with a trusted adult mentor who has an individual conversation to challenge, inspire, and support students through the first-time experience in rigorous college-level coursework. Tonight, we will continue our presentation with information from Mr. Tony Medina regarding the Palatine High School's Deep Equity Work.
Thank you. As Mr. Schumacher mentioned, Palatine High School has undergone tremendous changes in our demographics over the past 20 years. We have seen significant increases in the population of minority students, as well as students who come from low socioeconomic backgrounds. With these changes, major gaps have come to light. One of these gaps is in student achievement according to race and ethnic background. In terms of college readiness and the math and English portions of the SAT, our Hispanic and African-American students are consistently achieving at a much lower level than our white students. Second, as we know, student participation in activities and athletics has a strong impact on student achievement in our schools. The rate of participation of our Hispanic students is significantly lower than our white students at every single grade level. Third, we have made positive progress in our commitment to giving students more access to advanced-level and AP-level courses. There's still a major gap in the participation of our Hispanic and African-American students in advanced-level and AP-level courses in comparison to our white students. Lastly, I'll also address our graduation rate by identity. As you know, students who graduate high school have a significant advantage in employment opportunities over students who never walked across the state. When we began examining our why, as Mr. Schumacher mentioned, back in 2015, the graduation rate of our Hispanic and African-American students was nearly 15 percentage points lower than the graduation rate of our white students. As you can tell, the decision to pursue this equity work was imperative. We can call these achievements gaps, but we can also call them opportunity gaps. Our students of color have not been able to take advantage of their opportunities for a variety of reasons. These gaps that appear by race never fail to astound our staff. This issue has become a moral obligation for Palatine High School to pursue different avenues to address these significant issues. With the help of Mike Alder, who at the time was the Assistant Principal for Building and Grounds and Professional Development, we will explain in detail the work that has already begun and been completed with the partnership with Deep Equity. Palatine's journey with equity work began with three teachers not settling for the status quo with regard to the significant gap in graduation rate for Hispanic males, which Mr. Medina just mentioned. The Palatine High School administration recognized the gap as well, and the team of teachers were empowered to begin reading, researching, collaborating, and attending conferences on the academic achievement gap between students of color and their white peers. This initial gathering of information was shared with the Palatine High School administrative team, and the result of that work was the creation of the Palatine High School Equity Team. The early work of this team focused on identification and communication of existing supports, both school- and community-based academic and social supports, and how teachers could assist students in accessing these supports. The Equity Team collaborated and worked together for nearly two years. Towards the end of that first two years, the Palatine High School Equity Team started investigating the equity work of other districts, like Evanston Township and Niles Township, in order to learn what worked and what did not work in their equity professional development journey. Through this investigation, we found these schools started their equity work in-house, with knowledge gained by faculty and staff alone. They reported less than desirable outcomes in their equity efforts. They reported the need to reverse course and solicit the work of experts and dedicate a new administrative position to bring the work back on course. As the Palatine High School team reflected on what it had learned, it became clear that additional support and expertise was needed to navigate the many facets of equity-related work. At this time, we began identifying potential experts that could work alongside Palatine High School in this important work. The key was to work alongside. We visited District 88, Willowbrook and Anderson Trail High Schools as they were working with Dr. Gary Howard. We observed firsthand the content and delivery of Dr. Howard's message to educators. We observed the work and interaction between Dr. Howard and students of District 88 participating in his youth equity stewardship. The team of six from Palatine High School considered what we saw firsthand and the information gathered from additional reference checks to agree that Dr. Howard's Deep Equity Work was a good fit for Palatine High School. In our conversations with Dr. Gary Howard and his team, we found a partnership which allowed for us to pirateize the work. What this means is that we did not follow the script. What it means is, we were able to, pardon me. We did not follow the script of deep equity law step, but rather, Dr. Howard's Deep Equity allowed for Palatine High School to sequence and customize the work. Essentially, we made the work our own. Again, we piratized the work. The other experts we investigated allowed little to no deviation from their programs, and we knew that this work was personal and had to be Palatine. The Deep Equity Framework of Dr. Howard was chosen by Palatine High School because it emphasized building tone and trust within the learning community, emphasized collaboration between building leaders, teachers, and students, emphasized acceptance of our differences as a strength in arriving at real solutions to address our opportunity gaps because of the flexibility and the understanding of our demand to design the professional development for our staff, by our staff. And we had a common understanding that as educators, we know our primary accountability is to our students. As we worked closely with our team at Palatine High School and Dr. Howard to create and design a professional development with equity, we developed a model. In doing this important work, we must always be responsive and responsible. To that end, the diversity of our students, their unique gifts, humor, and resilience are always on our minds as we evolve in how we meet the needs of all students through this work. During the 2018-2019 school year, we began our work in conjunction with Deep Equity and Dr. Howard. We adopted a targeted, smaller-group model that would become the driving force behind our entire staff's work on equity. We selected a group of 48 staff members. When we began to integrate the group that would begin the initial training, our Equity Team wanted to be served that it would be a diverse group of staff members from all departments with varied perspectives on our students that were willing to listen to others' ideas and thoughts in order to address the needs of our students. This group came together two times throughout the 2018-2019 school year. Although the work was led by Dr. Howard and his team, the activities and messages were all driven and directed by Palatine High School staff. Much of the work done by the group of 48 was led by our why. When presented with some of the statistics that you've just heard, our staff was motivated, well-intentioned, and driven to make sure we began our work on equity in the appropriate way. When planning this work with Dr. Howard and his staff, Palatine High School made it a priority to emphasize the importance of being responsive to our needs, yet also responsible to our staff. The reason for this is that the real and impactful conversations that have to happen with regards to race and equity can be very difficult conversations. We were very cognizant of this and wanted to make sure that although we wanted to make an impact on our school, we had to be responsible in our approach with our students and especially our staff. This also leads me to the tone and trust piece of our foundational work. To have the productive discussions and professional development activities be worthwhile, we had to establish a positive tone and trusting environment for our group for people to be willing to share their ideas and thoughts on these difficult topics. Anyone that has participated in equity work understands that this type of work requires the examination of one's own experiences, backgrounds, viewpoints, and cultures. It was imperative that our group of 48 began to have dialogue to better understand our similarities, but especially our differences. It was an eye-opening experience for our staff to see how different we really were as people and as educators, and how we each had our own journey to Palatine High School. This led to some amazing discussions and observations about how each of our students has had their own unique journey and their own set of struggles that have not allowed them to take advantage of the opportunities that they have had in front of them. All of this can be summarized through the use of the term "cultural competence", which is understanding and recognizing others' experiences and journeys to develop strong relationships across all of our backgrounds. This is the key in establishing the purpose and direction of our work in equity at Palatine. At the end of our two sessions, our group of 48 was divided into seven subgroups that would lead professional development throughout the 2019-2020 school year. The subtopics included culturally responsive teaching, difficult discussions among staff, strong student voices, positive tone and trust, positive student-staff relationships, increased belonging and connectedness for students, and a clear leadership focus on equity. These seven subgroups met on a weekly basis to plan our work for the 2019-2020 school year. Everyone had some involvement in planning of the equity work that would occur throughout the year. Some groups had a stronger natural connection to the work, including the difficult discussion subgroup, Positive Tone and Trust, as well as Student Voice. Many of the staff members that were a part of these groups played a major role in the development of not only our opening institute days, but also the various professional development opportunities that were given throughout the school year. Fast forward to August of 2019, when our group of 48, in conjunction with Dr. Howard, led the entire professional development kickoff for approximately 300 of our staff members. Again, our focus for our activities was to establish positive tone and trust and lay the groundwork for the work that was to come throughout the 2019-2020 school year. Much like we began with our initial group, the majority of our day was spent learning about each other's experiences and journeys, recognizing that our students are different. Our school has changed so much over the last 20 years. New gaps have been created, yet we all understood the mission remained the same: reaching every student that walked through our doors. We created norms for our professional conversations as a school, 300 people in one room creating norms for our entire school, understanding that we're in different mindsets when it comes to our experiences as well as our beliefs. However, we're all educators for the same reason. We all want what's best for our students. We also were able to lead our staff through activities that were centered on the different experience and backgrounds that our students are coming from. Staff were able to participate in a powerful activity called Walking in Our Student Shoes, where we assigned a student's profile to each staff member and we experienced some of the hurdles and roadblocks that our students are facing every time they would try to walk through our doors. The feedback from our staff on this unique institute day was overwhelmingly positive. Staff members came away with an energy that reflected our purpose, starting our year off with the hope of making an unprecedented impact on our underrepresented students' success. For the majority of the school year, our theme for much of our professional development was "The conversation is the work." Some of our developmental opportunities included revolving meetings for staff and leading appropriate student discussions in the classroom with regards to race and equity and diversity. Snack and learn discussion based on equity as well as student achievement, as well as our work on education and how systemically some of our students have been left behind. Although many of our staff, like many educators, wanted to see equity in action in the classroom immediately, we stayed the course and continued to have conversations about ourselves, our experiences, and our school. Unfortunately, the pandemic did stop our work. Our focus had already turned to culturally responsive teaching, which brings together conversations on equity, culture, personal experiences, and gives our staff the tools to bring an even greater chance of success in our classroom for our students. The plan for the 2020-2021 school year was to have a strong focus on culturally responsive teaching, to utilize guidance from Deep Equity, but also with our own book studies and professional development, led again by our own teachers. We spent our summer with nearly 70 of our teachers in a book study that would direct our professional development to school. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, our focus this school year has been on making the remote or hybrid scenario a better experience for our students. We've also focused on social-emotional learning for our students. We are hopeful that in conjunction with the work of the district Equity Team, we will be able to continue to move forward with our work in culturally responsive teaching during second semester. With regards to our students, our most important stakeholders, we also work with Deep Equity on their Youth Equity Stewardship Program, which is also known as YES. The YES Program brings together students of all backgrounds, including race and socioeconomic status, to bring awareness to the issues that many of our students face every day. When the Palatine High School YES Subcommittee organized a group of 50 students that would be brought together, one of the main objectives was to bring together a group that matched what our student body truly represents. That being said, our staff did together an outreach program with our entire staff to find students who have strong voice, who have an open mind, and who are well-respected by their peers. Not every student that was selected was an AP student. Not every student had the best behavioral track record. And they did not have the same background by race or ethnicity. It truly was a microcosm of what our school and our country represent. This program was designed to bring light to the challenges that every one of our students are facing every single day, not just our students of color, but all of our students. Our students grew as a group with supportive teachers who are well-respected among all the subgroups in our student body. Every student shared their unique struggles. Students that never would have ever connected otherwise were able to connect. The connections and relationships that were formed across this multitude of backgrounds is truly what the goal of cultural competence did: to learn about each other, to learn about our backgrounds, and to understand where we come from. It's our hope that in the future, our entire student body will have the experience of the students that were connected to the YES Program. I'm going to end my part with a personal story. One of the students in our program, David, was a sophomore last year. And from the moment that he walked into the auditorium to participate in the YES Program, we could tell he was very, very uncomfortable. He just was not his usual self. David did not have the best grades. In fact, he struggles, he struggles in school. But his perspective in the classroom are what set him apart from other students and are what led him to being nominated to participate in the program. Being with people he would never have noticed before, let alone have spoken to. David was extremely quiet throughout the day. There was very little sharing. He was not his own self. However, he was attentive, and it was apparent that he was listening. At the end of the day, he went to one of his trusted fellows, who actually ended up nominating him for the group, and said, "Thank you, I really appreciate your time today, but this is really not for me." So we heard the conversation. He said, "Thanks for being here, thanks for being honest, we appreciate your time. You know, we wish he would have had a better experience." The next day, David came back to school. He went back to his trusted fellow and said, "I want, I want that." He said, "Why? Why do you want to come back?" And he said, "I went home, I thought about my day today. I was on the bus, and I walked into my house and I saw my younger brother and sister, and it reminded me of why I was chosen to be a part of the YES Program. I can make a difference, not just for me, but for my two siblings. I have this opportunity to have a voice and commit to change of PhD. I'm going to do it no matter how uncomfortable I am sometimes." And that's what we want for all students at Palatine: to have the opportunity to be heard, to have the opportunity to listen, and to have the opportunity to make a difference. Our work, although slowed due to the pandemic, has allowed our students and our staff to connect with the end goal of maximizing the educational opportunities for all students. Thank you.
At Conant High School, our vision is about achieving excellence in equity by focusing on opportunity and belonging. As a majority-minority school, equity is central to our focus so that we may provide a safe learning space for all students. This work began by helping staff recognize that the way we see the world is directly connected to the sum of our experiences. Our experiences are derived from our race, culture, gender, socioeconomic status, along with many other influences. The work of equity is emotional and uncomfortable. As a faculty, we spent time exploring neuroscience. Brain science tells us that students with the same learning capacity also experience, often experience different outcomes and systems that do not recognize ongoing equity work as central to their mission. Neuroscience forces us to accept that what we actually see with our eyes and process with our brains is more limited than what we'd like to believe. At Conant, we began this work by engaging in activities that helped us embrace this reality. The picture before you is an example of how we process what we see. Just by looking at the picture, our brains begin to search for relevant information to help us identify, react, and learn. Our assumption about the picture is based on our past experiences and our identities. Most people connect this picture to a sandy beach. However, anyone who spends time working on cars will first likely see a picture of the bottom of a car door with a rusted panel. What is most critical to know is that this phenomenon is directly connected to how we learn and how we behave. For too many students, school is an illusion, where what they experience is not reflected in how they learn and what they see. In the fall of 2019, our administrative staff, along with a group of teachers who serve on our school equity committee, decided a powerful activity for our entire school would be to have a firsthand experience of what families might encounter as they navigate our school community. The Equity and Empathy Simulation required us to create a microcosm of our community in our gymnasium. As you can see from the pictures, community sites such as Woodfield Mall, Village Offices, Employment Supports, Conant High School... Conant High School, childcare, and many other businesses and agencies were represented along the sides of the gym. The tables in the middle, where every single member of our staff assumed the role of a family member. Families were given a packet of information and materials that described a unique family situation. They were required to navigate several weeks of life in our community in a compressed period of time. It was important to impress upon the staff that this was not a game. The purpose of the simulation was to observe how family members responded to and reacted to and prioritize their weekly responsibilities. This included things like bill paying, homework completion, securing employment, planning family celebrations, and childcare. When we came together after the simulation and reflected on the experience, it was an eye-opening moment for our faculty and staff when we shared that every family in the simulation represented a real Conant High School family. Our staff reflected on their behavior and how quickly they made decisions they'd never made in their own lives. They reflected upon how each week, school became less of a priority. One faculty member could not manage to get a permission slip for a field trip sign because his parents were at work every time he wasn't home. We considered how we respond to something as simple as field trip forms, as simple as how when a field trip form is not completed and reflected on what this means from a larger system's lens. As Mr. Schumaker shared earlier, it's important to apply a strengths-based approach to equity work. To assume this work is required based on deficits of minorities negates the strengths and contributions of other races and cultures. Educational initiative after educational initiative that focuses on the deficit mindset, that the minority just need to be like the majority to fail over and over because they do not value race, culture, gender, or life experiences. While a strengths-based approach to equity work must be all-encompassing, clubs and activities offer our students opportunities to celebrate race, culture, cultural traditions and customs, and to share those with their peers. These images of Conant students celebrating their race and culture through Black Leader Achievers, Latinos Unidos, South Asian Student Association, and cultural awareness speak values about the value of a strengths-based approach when doing the important work of equity.
As I look around the room this evening, I know we're all here for the same reason: for our students. During the 2016-2017 school year, there was an emphasis on staff understanding of unintentional microaggressions that our students may be experiencing at Schaumburg High School. The traditional perception of education is many times that of a teacher sitting in front of the students in front of the room, while the students sit in a tent and listen to the teacher speak. As part of this process, this traditional model was flipped. A student panel of our students was assembled, and staff were given the opportunity to listen to the student perspective on their experiences at Schaumburg High School. The positive feedback from the staff on these sessions made it clear: we needed to focus more on listening directly to the ones that we're here for: our students. We needed to get their input on their experiences at SHS, especially with the changing student population and experiences over the years. Over the course of the next couple of years, focus groups of students became an important part of the culture at Schaumburg High School. Schaumburg High School began to increase the emphasis of equity work during the 2018-2019 school year. In the spring of 2019, student focus groups were hosted by members of the Schaumburg High School Equity Team in order to identify areas of emphasis for this equity work at Schaumburg High School for the following school year. These focus groups were composed of diverse students, and through these, we sought to provide a comfortable setting for students to share their insight on the culture at Schaumburg High School. Through conversations with students, it was evident that they connected best with teachers who took the time to understand them as individuals, understand their cultures, and understand their differences. These focus groups provided the foundation for a focus on culturally responsive teaching during the 2019-2020 school year to assure that our staff had a foundation to, as Mr. Schumaker put, make all students feel safe, welcome, and valued. During the 2019 school year, teachers were given the opportunity to gauge individual student feedback through the issuance of a classroom culture formative assessment survey. This survey provided teachers the opportunity to get feedback from students on their classroom experiences in their specific courses. This included questions about student perceptions of belonging and connectedness to the teachers, their peers, the course content, and the classroom activities. This allowed teachers the opportunity to reflect on ways to further connect with their students as they move forward for the remainder of the school year. As you're all aware, last spring, there were multiple incidents around the country that brought to light issues of race and equity. As a school, we were in the unique position of also being in the middle of a global pandemic. We were unable to offer in-person support to students who needed it most. Schaumburg High School joined the other buildings in the district last spring and early summer by offering student listening groups for our students. Students had the opportunity to share their feelings about these events in a safe setting and provide feedback on the key concepts of respect, diversity, equity, and unity in our buildings and the community. Once again, the student voice proved a powerful resource for us to gain understanding of our diverse students. One student from Schaumburg High School, Lydia, participated in these sessions. She described the experience as liberating and said that the people that were facilitating, the staff members facilitating these sessions, made her feel like she was being hurt. Two of the Schaumburg High School students that participated in these listening groups later became part of our now-established District 21 Equity Team. Lydia is one of the students participating on this. In speaking with Lydia, she stated that she feels that her voice, the student voice, is valued in the work that's being done, and she's excited about the impact students are having and the voice that they're putting towards the work that will have a meaningful impact on all the students in the district and the District 21 community moving forward.
Over the past few years, Front High School has been actively examining issues of equity in all aspects of our school, including curriculum, participation in activities, student discipline, and family involvement, just to name a few. Our focus has always been on making sure that all students have access to a positive school experience filled with exceptional learning opportunities. Last year, the Board of Education heard a presentation about trauma-responsive schools. So I'll only provide a brief summary of what it means to be trauma-responsive or trauma-informed. The basic premise of trauma-responsive schools is that the adverse childhood experiences, or ACES, to which a person has been exposed, present significant barriers to a student's ability to learn. The original ACES include things like abuse, neglect, and household dysfunction. Since the research in this area has evolved, other ACES such as bullying, community violence, and racism have been named as adverse childhood experiences. Some research estimates that up to 60% of young people are impacted by trauma. So the question is, how can schools support all students, even if we are unaware of all the burdens they carry? Front High School has turned its focus to two areas. First, what strategies can teachers use to address negative academic behaviors? In order to develop these strategies, we must first recognize that some behaviors are a manifestation of trauma. When a student acts out, it's not because they're a bad kid. It could be a coping strategy. When a student withdraws from the classroom activities, it isn't necessarily because they are bored or disinterested. When a teacher chooses to respond to the reason behind the behavior instead of the behavior itself, the outcome often feels more like compassion and support instead of a punishment. The second area we focused on is, what does the school itself need to do differently to support all students? This involves examining a wide range of practices, including our school rules, grading policies, and our communication with families. Teachers have modified their grading practices to emphasize learning and growth over compliance and completion. And when administrators deal with disciplinary issues, their primary focus is on providing supports or interventions rather than punishments. In a trauma-responsive school, equity is the cornerstone. As such, many of the large group interventions that we offer are effective with what they are trying to accomplish, but they only go so far in supporting every student. To support each and every student, our staff must tailor their approaches to account for a student's unique circumstances, strengths, and barriers to success. Our equity work will continue in this direction as we continue to learn how to support all students regardless of life experiences, income level, race, gender, or religion.
As part of ongoing district equity work, we have partnered with equal-opportunity schools for about five years. As you may recall, the primary purpose of this partnership is to identify underrepresented students not accessing our most rigorous curriculum. An intentional approach was employed to identify these students through a comprehensive look at the whole student, beyond a test score or a course prereq. As part of the student identification process, student-staff surveys are administered annually in search of several purposes like bringing awareness to our most rigorous curriculum, assessing student perceptions of academic support, identifying gaps in academic supports, and asking students to identify specific trusted adult relationships they would access for support and guidance. Looking at the bullet points in this next slide, we can see the specific targets addressed through this work with equal-opportunity schools. And our goal in closing the real opportunity gap between underrepresented student populations and their white, Asian peers. Reinforcing the benefits of AP with our students, fostering transitions from standard to AP classes, we find that students share a real concern over the shock factor when transitioning to our most rigorous curriculum. Learning mindsets and skills, this is a critical identifier. Students with a growth mindset will demonstrate grit and resiliency to succeed. AP literacy support, linking AP experiences to purpose and value for our students. Student perception of support at school, this piece is critical because of student voice. AP student belonging, teacher practices that support AP transition, building an environment and instructional strategies where all students feel safe, welcome, and valued. Developing peer networks for support both academically, emotionally, and emotionally. You see that throughout our five-year partnership with equal-opportunity schools, a trend is showing an increase in graduated class participation in at least one AP class or dual-credit course, and we attribute this increase to our intentional strategy of creating equitable opportunities for all students across the district. It is important to note that while this strategy and work was initiated to reduce the gap between underrepresented students and their white and Asian peer group, all students have benefited from this equity work. Again, this strategy includes identification of current students through indicators other than academic performance. Once identified, the students are encouraged to enroll in our rigorous curriculum through conversations by those who know them best: their teachers, guidance counselors, and their self-identified trusted adults. Once enrolled, students are supported through academic supports like AP study labs and peer networks. Students also receive the social-emotional support they need from trusted adults who are there to provide encouragement and practical strategies to navigate a more robust and rigorous curriculum. As indicated in this slide, students are maintaining their enrollment in our AP and dual-credit courses, our most rigorous curriculum, and maintaining high levels of academic achievement in these courses as well.
As you can see, achieving educational equity requires a conscious and consistent focus. We have been and will continue to be compelled to prioritize systematic equity and provide every student with access to the educational resources and rigor they need at the right moment in their education regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, home language, disability, sexual orientation, family background, or socioeconomic status. This requires that we continue to do work with our students, staff, and community to move forward, sometimes with topics and conversations that are initially uncomfortable and challenging. This is the only way to ensure that all stakeholders of District 21 uphold educational equity as an essential principle to our school system that is integrated into all policies, practices, operations, and processes in order to provide equitable educational outcomes for all students. We are deeply grateful for the opportunity to present to you and our shared community tonight, and also appreciate the need to hold each other mutually accountable for examining our policies, practices, and programs in order to eliminate disparities in our district wherever they are found. Thank you, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody else have any questions? I've got about five of them.
Go ahead. Why don't you start?
Okay. You did it a little bit. I was not on the board when this... These questions are all specific to Corwin, Deep Equity, and Howard. You kind of walked me through the process of how Howard and Corwin was found. You saw a need for some professional help, and you went out and did some research and found this group. Was anybody else interviewed for the work? Any other group besides Corwin and Howard?
Well, we were working with a company out east.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We were working with a company out east, or having conversations, I guess, as we're able to put that, called the East Project. Prior to deciding to go with...
So you did interview somebody else. You didn't just select this person and hire him?
Correct.
Was the Board of Education aware of this initiative?
We followed procedures and navigated the conversation up the chain of command.
So the idea to use Corwin and Deep Equity would have come through, did you use Title I funds, correct?
Yes, correct.
So that would have gone through the Title I funding, and then that would come through the Board through any payment that would have happened? Whether it was given to the Board as an individual highlighted item, I do not know the answer to that.
So the Board was aware of it because of Title I, but not aware of the initiative as it was ongoing?
In terms of the work of Palatine High School?
Yeah, I'm interested in the selection process and the involvement of the Board of Education in contracting for these services.
So the Board would not have been involved in the selection process? That's correct.
Okay. I'm not saying it's okay. I'm saying, okay, I understand that. For contracting, I've only found one policy with respect to the authority which would be delegated below the Board of Education, and that is a policy that allows the superintendent to award contracts of $10,000 or less per incident. Am I mistaken, or is there another policy out there that permits high schools to negotiate an award contract?
Lauren, I can't see you. Are you here?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My light is not on there. Give me a moment here. I can pull up the specific policy. But there are policies on the purchase threshold for particular items. There are also purchasing exemptions that do not require specific bidding, and that would be for things such as professional services that are unique or specific in which you would be selecting based upon the qualifications of an individual versus that of just the price.
Yeah, I understand that. I've read the material. Okay, I understand that this was funded by Title I money and that under the rules, this did not have to be bid. But somebody signed the contract with Corwin, and the only thing that I can see, the only instance that I can see in a policy is that essentially the Board of Education delegates that alone in a very specific instance, and that is a $10,000 threshold per item. I'm wondering why the Board was not involved in awarding the contract or approving the contract?
I'm not sure what your reference to the $10,000 is. We have a $25,000 and a $50,000 in the one purchasing policy.
Which policy is that?
I'm sorry. I'll have to pull it up here. The purchase would have been approved in the bills for payment as well as included in the budget as an expenditure as well.
Right, but is that authority to sign the contract?
The purchase of the... or the execution of payment for the contract would have gone to the Board for approval through the bills for payment.
So the only awareness that the Board has was to pay a bill. Is that correct?
In this particular incident, I believe that is correct.
This is about a $90,000 deal.
Also, just to... I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I just want to point out that in our agenda for this meeting today, just a cursory look at the bills that we usually approve without much discussion. There's an expense of $157,431 to Hartwood Plumbing and Heating. That has not been an individual contract that we've seen as an individual line item. There's a roof... There's a roofing contract for almost $64,000.
Ms. Cavill, can I just interrupt? Those are usually payments due to...
No, I would like to finish, and then I would be happy to hear what you have to say. Thank you. So what I'm saying is that this information to which Ms. Hummel is referring seems to me to be listed plainly in the bills for approval payment, which are routine agenda items in each of our Board meetings. That's just my understanding.
But my point is the authority to execute a contract. The only, the Board of Education is the authority to execute a contract, okay? Except by this policy, it's CBAA/FEA dated January 16th, 1997. The superintendent is authorized to award contracts for professional services that are needed by the district not to exceed $10,000 per incident.
Related to this presentation, are the rest of your questions related to this presentation?
A point of order, this presentation is not, is not what the Board passed, okay, this 6-1. The presentation that I had in mind was to concentrate on Corwin and the doctor here. So I've, yes, so it does relate to the conversation. Okay, the next question, the yes component. Is this considered an extracurricular activity?
Not an extracurricular activity because it wasn't a year-long, there wasn't a set sponsor, it was volunteer staff who were part of our subcommittee, but students were given and signed parent permission forms to participate in this program.
Okay, so the parents were aware of participation?
Yes, absolutely.
Did the 50 students retain the yes handbook, which I have a copy of?
With the initial, with that first year, actually I collected those, and those are in my office, and they were distributed when the training was going out.
Okay, so then they were, then you collected them after the training, okay. I understand, you know, what I caught from your brief here was that you customized the program. I've gone through the material, okay, cover to cover. I will use the word again, controversial. There's no question about it. Why did the yes program stop at page 43 of the manual? The yes manual?
The student version?
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Why didn't it?
Why did it? Why didn't it continue on?
I'm not sure of the question.
Well, okay, the copy that I have that says that the yes program went through page 43 and nothing further, although the students had the book so they could read.
They may have.
Yeah, okay.
They may have, but the program that we used was leading, we went through all the material leading up to page 43. We did not get into beliefs and the social dominance conversation. We talked a lot about our individual beliefs, you know, student struggles in school, but moving, we only had two days to get through the material, so we were not able to get through.
Okay, well, page 44, the title is creative resistance. Responding in a moment, I won't read the whole thing, it's short though, it has a disclaimer. Please consider your emotional and physical safety as well as others in a situation before engaging a process of creative resistance. There may be dangerous threats present that require different actions to ensure safety. That's a comment, not a question. Is there still, is the contract with Howard and Corwin still in effect? Is it over?
It's year to year. I believe we had signed the contract through last year. Since we have not been able to participate, we have not moved forward with any other work this year.
But there were, there was a two-year, if I've read correctly, it was a two-year contract, correct?
And I believe that began in 2018, 2019 through last, believe.
So there is no standing contract right now with Corwin?
I'd have to look back, I was never involved in the contract.
No, I understand, yeah.
No, I can answer that question. There is no current contract with Corwin.
Okay, is there any intention to re-contract with him?
We have had discussions, but we have not moved forward with anything.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd just like to make a clarification before I make any questions, that the items within the billing, those are parts of approved contracts for items that have come before the Board, just so that there isn't any misunderstanding that those are payments being made without authorization by the Board. We have bid openings, which Mr. Young and Mr. Lefever have participated in. Roofing contracts usually fall within those scope. We have those that we bid on, including, you know, up to $1 million for band uniforms. We see our photographer contracts that we approve, our architects, and our financial auditors. All of those contracts come before the Board, so it's not common practice that we only find out when we're making payments. We approve before we engage and execute contracts. I just wanted to say that that's not a direct comparison there. I just had a couple of quick questions. For the yes program, how did you respond when David basically kind of implied that he couldn't change his path after participating, and that he was doing this for his younger siblings in the future?
If I said it the wrong way, I didn't imply that David couldn't change his path. He said he went home, I have a chance to make a difference for myself, for my family, for others.
For himself too?
Yeah, it was a response to his, it was definitely not that, maybe just did not.
Okay, all right, because it came across as if he didn't think that he had the opportunity to make a change, and that he was doing this for his younger siblings.
Okay, I apologize.
I may have misheard, no apology needed, I was just asking for clarification, but he had a positive experience in the end and continues to participate?
We're not doing anything right now, but he did participate for the rest of the school year.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. And my question is, are the student focus groups that are being implemented in Schaumburg High School, is that a district-wide initiative, or is that just localized to Schaumburg based on their microaggression initiatives?
Sure, I can answer that for you. Every school helped students listen to these sessions during the summer as a result of some of the events that were occurring in our country, and some of the feedback that we were seeing from our students. It's important, we felt it was important to provide social-emotional support through that lens at the time.
But the practice of using this as a resource in planning and equity, it seems like it's been in place in Schaumburg High School, if I saw the slides correctly, 2016, and just this summer we're using it across the other school districts, but it's outside of that event, it's not a standard practice. Is that correct?
I would not say that, no. What I would say is for the purpose of this presentation tonight, the majority of the presentation was over the Deep Equity Program at Palatine, and that each school shared a snapshot of their work, certainly not a comprehensive across the board of everything they did. So Schaumburg High School highlighted that part, but certainly every school puts students in the center and does focus groups to determine their perceived experience and their experience.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
I do have a question, and I'm going to ask Ms. Hummel maybe for clarification. In regards to bids that have to come before the Board, I know that the amount went up. Ms. Hummel, can you talk a little bit about that, about the $25,000 or $50,000 bids that need to come to the Board?
Yes, for a specific item that's being bid, the threshold that's defined in statute is $25,000. For goods and services, $50,000 for construction projects. So that's, that is the threshold by which items must be bid under school code and brought to the Board.
Okay, thank you. So I think that maybe that clarifies what Mr. Kramer was asking about. I'm not certain, but it clarified it for me, because I remember those going up. And I think as a Board member, I think we just have to be certain about what our role is, and about governance, and about what we expect our superintendent to do and bring forward to us. And I know we need to be looking at the budget and what comes before us. I believe, I know I take a look at that, and I think each one of us do, but in some cases I'm certain things come through that we're maybe not totally aware of. So then this is a good place to discuss it. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Yeah, I did read the book, the yes book, and I didn't have any issues with it at all, at all. I mean, I thought the purpose of it was to bring awareness, and I thought that's what it did. I don't think there was anything controversial about it. So I commend you for what you were trying to do, what you're trying to achieve, and in essence, a person that's seen a lot of discrimination, and that I thought you were in the right direction.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Thank you. First of all, thank you all very much, all of our principals and your equity teams. As Mr. Vidina said, anyone who's been involved in equity knows how hard this work is. I've been involved in such work many times, and know how such work can benefit our district. Not all Board members have had this experience, I get that. But if someone's not been involved in such work, I suggest experience and learn from it. This is uncomfortable work, and everybody understands that. I'd like to acknowledge and show my thanks and appreciation for the veracity, dedication, passion, hard work, thoroughness, and progress being made by our principals and others involved in the equity initiative currently in progress within our school district, and that which has been in progress for several years. The opportunity to explore, learn, and potentially take actions to better our district and ourselves is one that I embrace. If there are others who feel differently, I invite such discussions so as to clarify and learn more from each other in regards to our diverse and differing points of view. This is part of the process and potential outcome from this initiative. Again, I applaud and thank those who are working on this project, and look forward to continued efforts and the findings we discover or act upon as a result.
Ms. Cavill?
I've got a few things to say. First, thanks obviously for your time. I know that you don't have much to spare under these circumstances, so I very much appreciate you taking the time to put all this together and come here tonight to talk to us. So I was especially impressed with the due diligence that I heard about in choosing the Deep Equity Program. I heard that not only was there research with professional firms that specialize in professional development, and there's a lot of professional development out there to choose from, so that's a difficult choice in and of itself just because of the quantity. But before the decision was made, that the administrators witnessed the education firsthand before making the decision, I'm especially impressed with that, and I appreciate the effort that went into even making the decision in the first place as a result of having examined data that led you to action, which again is a commendable process, so thank you for that. I am excited, once the equity work continues, you know, no matter which program or presenter you choose to go with, I am really excited about seeing the results, because the results are what's going to be brought back to the Board, and I'm really looking forward to that. It's obvious that the administrators and the staff and the students themselves are focused on narrowing those gaps. I was especially excited about the information presented about Schaumburg, especially the formative assessment survey from fall of 2019. In the Equity Subcommittee, of which I'm a part, such a survey has already come up, and I would be very, very interested in seeing the survey as it was presented and any results that are available, simply because I think it would be informative for all of us going forward in this process.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah, so obviously we still maintain a copy of that survey. The results actually for that and working with the committee, because this is such deeply personal work, the way it was done was they were digital surveys, the teachers actually just had their own copies of the results to reflect on it personally, because of the personnel, how personal that work was to them.
Okay.
And really with hopes that more and more staff members would make sure to do it with due diligence, you know, and take the time to go through that information.
I'm excited to see it, thank you. I appreciate that. And I really appreciated friend, I know this has come up before, I believe last spring, and I'll just reiterate the same sort of sentiment I said then, I appreciate the focus on ACEs and trauma response practices. I'm a person who grew up with ACEs, I've shared this before, and I, as a young person in my high school downstate, I attempted to have these kinds of conversations about what was going on in my home life of teachers I trusted, but this wasn't on anybody's radar at the time, and those conversations kind of fizzled out and went nowhere, and that's what we don't want to happen for any of our students that walk through the door. We want our staff to feel comfortable, as you've said, you know, last spring, in responding to those kinds of conversations, and for us to have the resources available to staff, and then most importantly to the students and families, to make sure that the family and students get the support they need so that they can learn and achieve all these outcomes that eventually come to us as the Board, so I appreciate that focus too. And just to clarify, I appreciate, again, being a rather new Board member, the points of order and about how bills come for payment, I just want to clarify what for me I think are two overriding questions, and that's, Dr. Small, if I wanted to see a roofing contract, I could simply ask you for it, right?
The contract, yes.
Yeah, any contract that comes before me that I vote for approval, you're willing to supply me, should I ask? And the same goes for anything listed in the approval of bills for payment. So if I wanted to get the details of any sort of expenditure that I see on that list at any Board meeting, I could ask you for those details, and you'd happily provide them?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for all your work. The person who referred to the closing achievement gaps and reframed it as opportunity gaps, these are the extraordinary opportunities, and it's all of your work as leaders that connect to our innovative teaching, and you see the results because we see it in the data. The exceptional learning is occurring, and it's different for different people and different groups of people. And the Board continues to have high expectations for all people, all students, to achieve at high levels. As you increase the level of achievement, we just keep increasing the targets for you. And we just expect you to get it done. How you go about doing it, that's your business. I just want to say thank you for the work that's being done. We see the results. It's a long process, but your work is appreciated, so thank you. Are there any other questions for our principals? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We need a moment to transition. Dr. Brennan, I'm looking for Mr. Hildebrand. Do you know if there's anybody in the simulcast room that wants to come back into the auditorium as the principals leave?
All right, and next will be the approval of Item B, the minutes from the special meeting of October 26, 2020. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstain.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
I think there needs to be a revision to what I'm seeing before I vote on it, sorry.
Okay, we'll stop the vote right here. Okay, we'll stop the vote right here and act like it never occurred.
I apologize.
Mr. Rosenblum, go ahead.
Does the roll call need to be revised on the minutes for this special meeting? The item on the roll call? Does it need to be revised? Is it incorrect?
The minutes you're talking about?
The, for the special board meeting, the board minutes for the special board meeting, does the roll call need to be revised?
I don't.
The present and absent. Is it?
No, if you look at, if you look at page two, my arrival's noted at 7:00 PM.
I apologize.
And then if you look at, if you go down to the final page, I have my abstains in both the acceptance of resignation and the notice to remedy, which is correct.
I apologize.
For the minutes that I was aware of.
I apologize.
It's okay. No problem. Okay, so we're back at the beginning, starting from scratch. The suggested motion is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of October 26, 2020. And we'll just begin with the roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstain.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Okay. That will bring us to special reports. First, we have our Freedom of Information Act requests. Any question or comments here? Okay, next item is the 2020-2021 school year update. Dr. Small?
The District 211 staff has done an exemplary job of keeping our schools safe for everyone on our campuses. The transmission of COVID within our schools has been minimal, if any. As we witness the current events outside of our school, the success we have experienced has not been possible without every single person working to ensure a safe environment. My sincere gratitude to each staff member for making that possible. Even though each school has implemented rigorous safety protocols, the world surrounding our schools is taking its toll on our school environment as people come on and off our campuses daily. The number of COVID cases and individuals staying home because of COVID symptoms among both students and staff is significantly increasing during the month of November compared to October. Our increase in positive cases and quarantines coupled with the most recent statements from the Cook County Department of Public Health, the Illinois Department of Public Health, and the governor leads me to bring forth that the District 211 move into a three-week adaptive pause and begin remote learning sessions on Monday, November 16, as described. All students will be in the remote scenario for classes. Academic supports will remain in place, but not all supports will be held in person. Some will be held remotely. Food service will still be available for pickup or drop-off. Transportation will be available for after-school athletes and food drop-off. The IHSA winter season competitive sports will remain in-person as long as the IDPH, Cook County Department of Public Health, ISBE and government guidelines are followed and it is allowed. Activities will be remote or in-person with principalship approval. Employees with duties that allow remote work will be able to do so with the option to be in-person if needed. Staff who work with students may choose to work remotely as long as they have access to reliable internet for student engagement and the ability to work undisturbed during classroom and academic support time. The school is open for staff to have access to be in the classroom during the school day. Staff whose duties do not allow them to work remotely may have schedule adjustments or alternate duties to continue to meet the needs of the district. Not being consistently in-person with our students is not what any educator wants or believes is ideal. Our staff will continue to work together to support our students through outreach and individual connections. Student support can take many forms, but it begins with the connection between students and staff. Our Student Services Department and Support Teams will work diligently to stay connected with our students throughout the next three weeks, bringing them into school as needed for alternate support. It is vital that our students and staff continue to be diligent about avoiding unnecessarily travel and activities, wearing a mask, observing social distancing rules, refraining from gathering in large groups, and practicing frequent handwashing both at school and elsewhere. I'm confident that together we can get through this uncertain time while we concentrate on providing opportunities for our students and preparing to return to hybrid scenario on Monday, December 7. Even with the three-week pause, we can continue to prepare for our December 7 return and for next semester. Our parent outreach during December will occur to see if there's any change in the family's approach to choosing either in-person or remote selection as we plan for the second semester. Our district is the first to apply to the Cook County Department of Public Health for rapid point care test kits. Hopefully, we will have quick approval and access, get these kits quickly, and work with the Cook County Department of Public Health for the best use of these kits within our campuses. Finally, basketball, though recommended as a winter sport by the IHSA, is not recommended until spring by the IDPH, ISBE, and the governor. Therefore, we will continue to work through the MSL, if possible, with the agreement of the other districts or other districts in our area to plan a season that follows the IDPH guidelines.
At this time, I welcome a discussion and any questions.
I do have a question. Is it possible that we can still remain in school next week, given that the week of Thanksgiving is a short week with only two days of starting the e-learning, you know, at that time? Still being able to stay in school next week? Any possibility?
That is a possibility. It would go against what the IDPH is recommending in terms of people staying put. It is different than the recommendation I'm giving you tonight. But if you ask, is it possible, it is, if that's the direction the board gives me.
Because we're still going to be seeing allowing students to come in and meet with the teachers after school or in the afternoon, I should say.
That's correct.
And some labs and some things that are taking place.
That's correct. The shift is back to similar to what we were doing in August and September, the beginning of September.
Ms. Klimkowitz, were you finished with your?
Yes, yeah, thinking.
The, you know, 2020 hindsight is everything. I'm disappointed that we didn't go into hybrid when we said we were going to. We went into remote immediately. We stayed there for 15 weeks, 13 weeks. Remote clearly does not work, and I think that we should do everything we can until it is impossible to go on because of staffing levels to bring the students back. Okay? And we don't know what that looks like. The positivity rates at the school are very, very low. It's a microcosm. Listening to the governor's speech today, it was, hey, look, it's not the schools, it's person-to-person family contact that is a spreader. The safest place to be is probably in the school. You know, so, you know, I would submit that I realize that there is some point where because of cumulative, growing, changing requirements or needs to quarantine, I mean, I heard some ridiculous proposal today that if you live in suburban Cook County and you go to anyplace else, you got to quarantine for 14 days. That was not part of the speech, but that was on the table. If you go to Wisconsin, okay, you got to quarantine for 14 days. Does the district have a specific staffing level plan that at this number with this staffing, we can't do it, but above that threshold, we can?
The staffing relies on the ability for classroom monitors or classroom substitutes to come from outside the district. They are not contracted daily in terms of required to be there daily. We have some that are willing to be there daily, but at any moment they can decide not to be there. It also relies on the ability of teachers and their willingness to cover classes during their non-teaching classes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
On any given day, that number is not a definitive number.
Willingness? I don't understand willingness.
The teacher to teach during their non-teaching time, they have to volunteer to do that.
Is that by union contract?
Yes, because it's not a part of their standard day. They're doing something on top of their standard day.
We're in an emergency situation here. Can that be negotiated or revised during the emergency so that they got to teach during their non-teaching period?
Any change of working conditions needs to be negotiated. Any change in working conditions needs to be negotiated.
Okay. Can it be negotiated?
It, what do you mean? Can it be negotiated? Can it be brought to the table? Yes.
Will you try to renegotiate that? Should we?
That's one of the things the board wants me to do. I can bring that to the table.
So, are you asking to open the union contract for negotiations?
That's the whole problem.
Because I believe that will open the union contract.
If I can answer that.
Yeah.
The way the pandemic is set up and the way we deal with different working conditions for this situation does not open the entire contract. It opens only situations that are changed for working conditions based on this year.
Yeah, I mean, that would make sense to do that. And if the union doesn't want to do it, I mean, I wouldn't understand it. I really wouldn't.
So, what you're asking is that teachers are required to cover other teachers' classes when they are not teaching?
Yes.
So, to give up their planning periods that they use to make sure that the classes that they are teaching are good classes? Because that's the time. They're not giving up lunch. They're giving up their planning periods. That's what you're asking.
Well, I'm still kind of, we're under a different structure with the block scheduling, so I don't know if they have the same planning structure they may have had previously within the structure of the original contract. So, that may be something that's open, especially if there are fewer teachers that are participating in the block after the primary classes for the extra help. I know my son had gone in and some of the teachers were like, what are you doing here? So, you know, I don't know if that time is really utilized.
I just, I would need more information before I could support because it's one of these ideas that sounds really great in theory, a quick and easy way to just make our teachers act as substitutes because of the emergency conditions. It's one of those things that sounds really easy, but I would need more information about when their planning periods are supposed to be. The situation is more work, not less, for teachers, so they still need time to plan and then how that works with this hybrid schedule. So, I can't just off the bat say, oh, sure, that sounds great. And I don't think I have nearly enough information to know whether that would be a good idea. I know from a staffing point of view, you know, that'll be hard for teachers to swallow, but at the same time, I don't know under these new conditions what their capacity even is to ask them to do that. I don't have enough information.
As it is now, though, on a daily basis, anyone that wanted to pick up an extra spot
Absolutely, they can.
Would do that. They would have that opportunity now.
And they are informed of what is available to be able to do that.
So, you're, to the extent they desire to do that, they do today. That is my personal experience.
Exactly. To the extent that they desire to do that. I'm saying they got to do it. We're in an emergency situation, okay? Everybody is stressed. Everybody has extra work. The parents especially, okay? So, a teacher is inconvenienced for a day or two. You know, we are at that level where that type of action, that kind of decisive action, has to be made, and we can't do a fact-finding two-week or two-month tour to decide whether or not it's a good idea. I see no choice but to do that.
I don't understand because our classes are on a block schedule, so we can't make the assumption that we can take somehow afternoon time. We don't have a time machine and magically make those teachers available in the morning. They're on-site because they're teaching. So, if you say we have all this open afternoon time, well, that time is open specifically in the afternoon. You can't just magically import that time into the morning and have a teacher teach, I don't know, two classes at once, teach their geometry class, and then also act as a substitute for a history class. That doesn't work. It doesn't make any sense.
It'll work if we want it to work.
How will that work to ask a teacher to use their afternoon time to substitute in two classes in the morning?
Can we just clarify? I think that the question before the board is, do we want to make it a goal to structure some kind of, you know, mechanism so that we have an agreement with regard to the substitution of teachers beyond just being on a as-needed volunteer basis? And would that assist potentially in the next semester if we're in the same type of model? I don't think it's our place as a board to work out all the nuanced details or the execution or the operation. I think that belongs to the administration, but I think the question before the board is, is it a strategic goal to approach the teachers with more of a structured requirement for substitution? Would that sound appropriate?
I thought the discussion before the board was remote learning. And my question is, Mr. Kramer brought up teaching and that as the reason or the impetus or the fear of switching to remote learning. But it's my understanding that there's more to it than the number of teachers and staff that are available to teach to create the environment and the reason for going remote. Maybe you can explain a little bit more around that, Dr. Small?
Yes. So, I've been keeping the board informed this week of our pressures, so to speak, of making sure that we are staffed. Those pressures change on a daily basis depending on what is happening for the number of quarantines. At this point in time, I have not told the board nor is it true that we have run out of staff. We have had days where we have had to have administrators in the classroom covering because we couldn't get substitutes to come in, but we made that work. So, we are at our maximum on certain days. Absolutely we are. But as Mr. Rosenblum is reflecting, there's more to this decision than just that. We haven't surpassed our maximum, but we're pushing it. We have an increase that we are seeing of our own staff and students of positive cases. What we do have then are, even though our staff is six feet apart, we have more and more students who are sitting there, and staff, who are sitting there six feet apart, who don't realize that they are positive because they haven't shown a symptom. So, when we do our contract tracing following the guidelines of Cook County Department of Public Health, they are, they may not be symptomatic when they are contagious. So, we have students and staff, when they are deemed as positive, we have to go back 48 hours. If they are showing a symptom and then become positive, we have to go back 48 hours from when they were showing the symptom. So, what that is doing is having more and more people connected in our schools with the positives. That was what we did not see in October. We were pretty steady in terms of the number of positives. In November, we doubled, and that increase I do not see as decreasing. So, that's the second piece behind it. The third piece behind that is the statements from the Illinois Department of Public Health, the governor, and Cook County in the past 48 hours have all indicate a reference to make sure that you are doing things appropriately and staying at home. We certainly do things appropriately at school the best we can. It is not a guarantee when the numbers of people coming into our buildings are increasing with positives. So, my recommendation for the three-week pause follows the three weeks that the IDPH is saying that we need to hunker down and make sure that we can put this down into a different direction.
Pritzker also said, we want the kids in school. He kind of, that was a carve-out from the general guidance or direction to stay at home. He carved that out. He said, get the kids, keep the kids in school. So, it's a special case. And, you know, I'm glad you were putting up the dashboard on the number of cases. It's, you know, how those are calculated and how they come in is, you know, I don't know that there's a, I don't think it's very precise. I think you're doing the best job you can.
What is not precise on the dashboard?
Is it, are those exact numbers?
Yes, those are the exact numbers put in by our nurses, who are also the ones who report as required to the Cook County Department of Public Health.
Okay, so they're exact, and they're very low. They're very low. So, I mean, the danger of COVID is So, I mean, the, the, the danger of COVID is much less here than out there. I mean, the parents are right. Let's get the kids in school. Let's do whatever it takes to keep the kids in school. Whatever it takes. You, you just said it. We made that work. It's difficult because it's, it's a fluid situation. It changes moment to moment, day to day, and you made it work. And, and, and I think you can make this work too, if you want to.
I, um, I'm not comfortable acting outside of the Illinois Department for Public Health guidelines, aside from the matters of health and safety, that are being public health principles and agencies for a reason. It, I believe exposes us to legal liability that I think, um, would be irresponsible to do. Uh, so that's how I feel about the Illinois Department for Public Health. My opinions about Pritzker and whatever he said during the day, I don't see have any relevance to this meeting. I'm really interested in the Department for Public Health. Um, I want to point out that our feeder districts have also had to take similar adaptive pauses for the exact same reasons. We're not standing out here alone in this because the situation has been explained by Dr. Small, reflects the reality of the community that we live in. And so we can look at the COVID number dashboard on our specific website and say that it's low, which is a matter of opinion. What you think is low might not be what I think is low, but regardless, the numbers have doubled in a month. And our superintendent has just said she does not expect those numbers to somehow reduce in the next three days or seven days, thus the recommendation in conjunction with the Department for Public Health for an adaptive pause. Now, all of this being said, I want to repeat myself from other meetings for members of the community that are listening, because I agree with the, largely, the Department for Public Health, because this is how I feel about the situation, because remote learning is something that some families, a substantial, you know, substantial number of our families chose, that doesn't mean that I think that this situation is just wonderful and that's just working out really well for everybody. And that's just, it's madness. You know, I'm teaching and, and, and my kids are virtual learning and, uh, you know, I understand from both sides of the coin. Um, it's impossible, you're in an impossible situation as a superintendent. In some ways, you're in an impossible situation as a staff person. You are in an impossible situation as a parent or a caring adult of a child who needs to go to school. So I'm not sitting here throwing confetti in the air because I think any of this is wonderful. But I think that, you know, as a board and as a board member individually, all I can do is try to take the guidance of the superintendent that I voted for and I placed my trust in for very good reason and look at the information that I'm given from the Department of Public Health and try and make the best decisions that I, I can answer for individually as a board member. So I'm not without empathy for kids who are stuck at home and virtual learning just doesn't work, but they don't have a choice right now. I'm, I'm not without empathy for any of this. But I'm also not going to sit here and pretend that we have the staff or that it would be a reasonable solution to just go back to normal and open up school and pretend that everything's fine, when it absolutely is not. The issue about the staffing before, um, my question was not, you know, is a governance issue. I, I question whether or not even mandating our teachers to act as substitutes on their planning periods would even solve the problem when we're talking about the size of a labor pool that simply is too small. So you can mandate that some do their job, but if we just don't have enough bodies available at the same time when our instructional time is, it's not going to help. So this, this is, this is the whole thing. I would need a lot more information. I'm not even sure that solution would help, even if it would be something that we could do. So acknowledging that there is no solution that is going to make me, Dr. Small is a person who just wants everybody in school like everybody else, me as a parent, there's no solution that's just going to make this go away and have everybody be happy. I support the work that Dr. Small and her team has been doing in a difficult, impossible situation. I do not support acting outside of the Department for Public Health guidelines, regardless of what Pritzker and his administration says. Because not only would that demonstrate a certain level of disregard for the safety of not just our students, but the family members they go home to, but our staff, our bus drivers, our food support workers who are still coming in and packaging food, our administrators, et cetera. So, you know, do I like the idea of a three-week adaptive pause? No. Did I like the idea of an adaptive pause for District 15 that my children attend? No! But at the same time, I understand the reasoning behind it. And I think that in a world where we don't have, a lot of families just don't have a lot of options, I mean, this is, without, you know, robust economic relief available to a lot of working people, the only thing we can sit here and say as a school board member, because I'm not in charge of national policy, is that we have to look after each other. And that's the only way we're going to get through this. We're gonna, we have to look after each other and, and that's how I feel and that's why I'm voting the way that I am. And that's why I support Dr. Small's work. I know she feels the same way. She cares about the staff. She cares very much about the students and about their families.
So, so with that, as part of the discussion, I just want to clarify that, that this board did direct a resolution that the superintendent is authorized to modify the plan and that, um, she will take the guidance from any authority over the district. That includes the governors specifically named. So to disregard the governor, even though we've provided the superintendent direction to follow guidance from the governor, is conflicting at best from the board as a whole when providing direction to the superintendent. Additionally, the Illinois Department of Public Health, the Illinois State Board of Education, the Illinois High School Association and the Cook County Department of Public Health. So I think the challenge for the superintendent is when there are conflicting guidances from these bodies that we've named in our resolution, which body should take precedent? And I think that is primarily the reason why we're here having the discussion is because in one essence, you have a governor saying one thing, you have the Illinois Department of Public Health stating another, and you have the Cook County Department of Public Health also stating something. So, um, I think it's our responsibility to clarify and provide priority in what the recommendations are coming. That's my opinion on that.
I, I, I know we've gotten information and I truly appreciate that and, and I echo what Ms. Cavill had said about administration. It's, uh, we all want the kids back in school because that's the best place for them. And I've given a lot of thought from the information we have. I guess what I would probably be asking is, if at all possible, keep the kids in school at least for the next week, if that's something that we can, we can do, you know, safely for the kids, for the teachers, for the staff and everything. And the Thanksgiving break would be more of a natural break for families to be able to, to adjust, um, with the, with the e-learning. That's what I'm thinking. I know that families, if their students are supposed to be coming to, to school, they have an option. They can choose to keep their child home and do the e-learning and not send the child to school. So maybe that covers the bases for everyone. I'm not certain. I, there's, there's, as you said, there's really no answers right now. It's something that, that we're dealing with and we're trying to do the best that we can for everyone involved, and there are just no good answers. But in my thinking, maybe if, if at all possible, of keeping them in for, for this next coming week.
My problem here is, I don't know how many of you people have known people that have caught COVID and seen what it's done to them and the amount of time they have to spend in the hospital, let alone some of the damages that happen after you get over COVID. I just, you know, I've had a couple of friends that were in the hospital for three, four months. I mean, they made it out, but they're still not the same. And I can't see putting our students at that kind of risk either.
Any other comments here?
I would only agree with Anna Krumkowitz's suggestion of keeping the school open for the extra week if the Illinois Department of Public Health came down on the side of that being a safe thing to do. But if their guidance says, as you've indicated and does not change, that it simply wouldn't be safe to do that and thus the three-week recommended pause, then that is what I'm going to support. For me, and when I said I disregard the governor's opinion, I mean his day-to-day speeches. Of course, he, you know, he, um, his executive orders, I'm not implying that they shouldn't be followed, nothing like that. I mean, the content of his day-to-day speeches. But, um, I'm, I'm really uninterested in acting outside of Illinois Department of Public Health guidance. I think it would, in terms of a risk benefit for me, uh, the ratio would be something, the risk benefit, that I couldn't, I couldn't support. But if somehow the Department of Public Health said it, we could do it safely, yes, but that, that's, that's my boundary for that.
Has IDPH said we have to take a three-week pause?
No, IDPH has, is recommending the three weeks from, when they announced it yesterday, for communities to remain at home, to not have any large gatherings and to keep following those social distancing rules and situations.
So there's no, I mean, they haven't said you, you, you can't, you can't keep kids in school. They haven't said that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's a school board decision or, or your, your decision in this case?
That's why I'm here in front of you today.
They haven't issued a mandate, but they've issued guidance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anything further here?
So my thought is, number one, safety. Safety of our students, safety of our staff, safety of our administrators. And staff, I mean teachers as well. Number two is the education of our students. And I think, I also think that, that remote learning is not in the best interest of our students when it comes to education and there are, and in some respects, their health, as we've heard from the public and we've talked about, um, from a, um, social and emotional health perspective. But we have to do what's in the best interest in, of the community at large. And I echo Ms. Cavill's concern and about not only what goes on within our buildings, but what happens around our buildings. Because what happens in our buildings comes from outside our buildings and what happens within our buildings goes back to outside our buildings. So we have to look at the overall community and not just what happens within our schools themselves. And, and we need to look at a variety of different things. And this is extremely complicated and very troublesome. I mean, I think we're all struggling with that. We all want, I know I want, I think everybody here wants, the kids in school, period. But how do we do that while meeting the needs of everyone involved? And it's a huge struggle. And, and I don't know what the answer is, but we need to be responsive and supportive and take things almost on a day-by-day basis. I think we're doing that. And, and listen to the community, listen to the professionals, be they the health professionals, the science professionals and the education professionals, to help us go in the right direction and, and do what's in the best interest of everybody in mind.
Okay. Thank you for all your analysis and your work in this area, Dr. Small. Difficult situation. Next item on our agenda is the District 211 Equity Team update. Dr. Small, did you want to make any remarks here?
The District 211 Equity Team continues to meet as a full team and the committees each month progress towards the recommendation that's coming to this board in the spring. Each committee has identified key stakeholders that they would like to be engaged within the conversation to hear the voices of our students, our staff and our families in District 211. The collaboration with a professional organization or consultant outside of District 211 would provide the expertise in the process of valid and reliable collection of feedback and would provide a bias-free analysis of the themes that come from our community feedback. Mr. Schumacher has networked with the IASB, the Regional Office of Education, partnership through our Joyce Foundation, as he works for possible references for these resources. A recommendation will be brought to the board to, for the December meeting in order to, who we would reach out to, to help us with this work as we go out and seek feedback from our stakeholders.
Thank you. All right, our next item on the agenda is the Fall Curriculum Committee Report. We have a suggested motion that the curriculum committee report and recommendations be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments here?
Discussion?
Yes.
Uh, this isn't, I would have thought that this would have been under new business rather than special reports, but that's, that's, that's a minor point. I mean, which, it's a report that we're going to, that there's a resolution on. Is there anybody, is, is there a board member liaison to the curriculum committee?
No, the curriculum committee is made, actually, I'm going to let Mr. Schumacher do this. He ran his first round of curriculum committees this year and I will let him answer the questions on this.
Thank you, Dr. Small. Uh, the curriculum committee consists of department chairs of each academic department across their five schools, uh, the principals of each of our five schools and myself.
Well, then, is, is this particular vote, is it time-sensitive? I mean, if we don't vote on it today, does anything change?
So the time-sensitive nature of the approval of the things that are on here are to fit in the budgetary process. And so, for example, the textbooks that are in here, there are three of them mentioned. Uh, the approval process needs to be made so that we can begin the budgeting process and the process of ordering and securing those for the school year.
The, the, the difficulty I'm having is that, the, the, the committee report was pretty extensive, okay? A lot of stuff I don't understand, okay? Are there other textbooks besides the three that are, that are involved?
Nope, that's why those three.
Because the rest of it was just status quo essentially?
Oh, I wouldn't say status quo. There's a lot of updates about a lot of the work that's been done and a lot of improvements that we're consistently looking to make in addition to updates on what work has been done over the summer and also what work has been done to ensure that we have effective teaching methods in our hybrid or remote model.
It's, it's a little mysterious to me. I mean, going forward, could you do a, a presentation? I hate to put you through the sly business again, but it, it would be helpful to, to kind of frame it, frame it for, I mean, we got to vote on it, right? And, and I feel, I feel ill-equipped to, to cast a vote on this right now with my limited knowledge of the process and how it does and what the terminology means.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I, I don't even know how to answer the right question, quite frankly. I mean, I read, I looked at the books, they look fine, okay? But other than that, I, I don't understand the whole process.
Well, what I can tell you is that, that's a significant portion of my role is to make sure that we're using the proper curriculum materials that are going to be rigorous for our students and have the right content that's connected to our critical learning standards. So in the curriculum committee process, there's many reviews that get done prior to the motions getting to you. And so the individual teacher reviews the materials, the professional learning team that the teachers involved in reviews it, the department reviews it, they bring it to the principals, and then we review it again as a whole committee. And so that's the, what I would call the checks and balances to the process to even get to you at this point.
But the board votes on it.
The board votes to approve the items that are at the end of this.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough information for me to cast a vote on this.
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, again, I don't even know the right questions.
So, so what would be the total software cost for all of the software in this package that we would be approving tonight?
Uh, some of the software is in the payments on this one, but I, I did not put together a full financial analysis of the cost of this. This, the purpose of this report is the curriculum report, not the financial part.
Right, but if we approve this, we're committing to spending funds to acquire the software that we've directed you to purchase, correct?
No, that's not true.
That's not the case?
That comes through with the budget. So these are the preparations in order for them to put them into the budget that then comes forward.
The curricular budget process are different. We're approving these as curriculum pieces that teachers could use. And then that's why we do it now so that they can get in the budget process.
Okay.
Okay, so then the, the funding for the software is incorporated into the technology budget then, at some point? Or the classroom budget?
It starts at the school level budget, that's correct.
And then can you just clarify on the Edgenuity courses? Those seem like digital correspondence courses to make up for credits that weren't met? Is that the intent of that software?
I wouldn't call it digital correspondence. I think it, uh, things have advanced since the courses were set up in that video. It's a similar, it's a similar model to that.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, can you explain the Edgenuity coursework a little bit more? Because I don't, I don't know that that, just give a little bit more on what that really is.
Sure, so Edgenuity is an online learning management system that selected students could use. Um, every student is not automatically using this, it's only in some cases. And so what has happened is, uh, Edgenuity as an organization has built these courses, and there's one of two ways you can do it. You can simply say to Edgenuity, "We want this course in the way that you built it," or you can say to Edgenuity, "We want to look at all of the options that you have within the course and the things that could be included or not included, and we want to tailor make the course to our District 211 curriculum standards and our critical learning standards." And that's what we have done. And so, starting last spring, our department chairs and teachers began exploring what was available within each course, specifically content and curriculum, and they chose that. And so, uh, within this, again, we were able to customize it to the District 211 learning experience.
So as it's written in the report, it, it's used for students that couldn't earn a passing grade within the traditional curriculum. Um, is there an anticipated threshold for how many students we would be using the software for? Is it, are we expecting 5%? Or I guess, I'm trying to figure out why we would deviate from our traditional models and engage this software in, in certain cases? And how does this benefit our student versus either repeating a course or, um, readjusting to meet the credit by retaking, you know?
Sure, yeah, that's a great analysis on it. And what I would say is, to that specific statement, is our goal is that this, our students in District 211 graduate in four years. And what we have found is, when you're a student, and I would say especially a freshman student, and you're in a situation where you failed one or more courses and you have to take those exact courses the next year in addition to the sophomore courses, then you, it becomes an issue to graduate in four years. And so this is an intervention that we can put in place immediately for our students after they fail, as opposed to waiting an entire summer and then taking it the next school year.
So I just, I, my concern as a board member and as a parent would be that this becomes more of a safety net or a parachute, and it, it, it kind of takes us off the hook of catching students that aren't performing midway through or, or after the, uh, a portion of the coursework, catching them and elevating them up to get through the class instead of letting them fail and then having this kind of as a crutch to come in and-
If I could, uh-
But I, I don't, I'm, you know, that would be my-
I understand your, your point, and, uh, it is, uh, it is clear, uh, that that could happen. However, our system is not designed to work that way. We have a system of checks and balances throughout the students experiencing their courses where problem-solving teams evaluate their progress towards success and then step in in the moment to try to affect positive change. Most of the time, we are successful in that. In the rare instance that it is not, uh, an outcome that we're looking for and a student fails the class, that's when this type of option would be entertained. It is not a one-size-fits-all in any way. But our, uh, our school counselors, our psychologists, our social workers, our intervention administrators, all work together to identify the students that it would be an appropriate option for.
Okay, and that, that was kind of why I was asking as far as how many students we anticipated using this, because, you know, if it's a few, then it, it's less of a concern. But if it's open-ended, I'm, I'm not sure that-
Yeah, this, this would only come after a student has exhausted all of our more traditional interventions. For example, in our math departments, there are structured, um, supports that are layered on top of the student's classroom experience to help build up their skills and help them be successful in class. Uh, that's just one example of something that we've tried when a student is struggling with class.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the Edgenuity, the Edgenuity course as well. It seems that we're being asked to approve the courses and thus the contract with the organization that provides the courses. Is that accurate? That's my first question.
That is not accurate.
Okay.
The approval comes in the course, much like it would the curriculum of the course.
So using, there's, there's no, is there a company Edgenuity?
Yes.
Are we already contracted to use Edgenuity?
Yes.
Yes, I believe so.
We are, we have been for some time.
Okay, but at this point, because we don't know the number of students, we don't know what the cost is. We don't know what the expense is going to be to the district. Is that accurate?
That's correct. This is solely a curriculum report. So if I can explain just a little bit about what you're approving here. Edgenuity, an Edgenuity course is a course that probably has, what? Four or five times the amount of curriculum that we would have in a given course. So in order to equate it to M117, M217, M317, the curriculum process is asking our curriculum leaders to review the course to select the actual units of the course that mimic our course. So that when it comes to a transcript, if we are going to show that a student failed the course and then they repeat the course, we indicate that the course was taken online. But we also indicate the same course number because the curriculum is the same. That's the curriculum part of this report. It is the curriculum behind the course that has been selected by the department chairs and the teachers to make sure it aligns to our actual courses. So we are true to our transcript when we put that on there.
In looking at the music curriculum, it says items for approval, software. Are we approving the software itself? Are we approving the use of the software, the purchase of the software? What are we approving? The expense associated with it? What are we approving? Or are we just approving to be able to use the software?
Correct. You are approving that this software could be a piece of curriculum that our music department could use. There are no numbers, there's no dollar signs associated with any of the approvals that you will make tonight on this matter. It's simply, this can be a part of our curriculum.
And then when we use that curriculum, then we get a, a approval to, to pay a bill? Is that accurate?
Right, so this allows us to then budget for these items that comes to you for the budget approval process. So we want to make sure it's approved at a curricular level before we talk about the money.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the curriculum? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Upstayed.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
All right, next item of business is the 2020 School Report Cards. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education directs the superintendent to post the 2020 School Report Cards to the district and school websites no later than November 30, 2020. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions here?
If I could just make a reference, uh, we were expecting to have a welcome addition of the College and Career Readiness Summitive, I'm sorry, the College and Career Readiness Indicator to this. That's what we were expecting. Uh, the Josh's office, as well as Dr. Hauser's office, were working well with our tech services to make sure we had an accurate representation to present to the ISBE for the upload of this. Unfortunately, the pandemic shifted what the ISBE was expecting to do this year, and therefore, the School Report Card remains as it was last year, including our summative designations because much of the data was not available for them to upload. But we are ready for that College and Career Readiness designation and look forward to, uh, when that data comes forward for our district.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed at motion, Chris?
Mr. President, a question for, before we leave this section. Uh, are we, will we see a variation report soon? I kind of expected to see one at this meeting.
Uh, yes, you'll get the first variance report in, uh, for the financials through the end of October at the December meeting.
Okay, so it's not every month, or it goes month to month from now on, right?
For the most part, month to month. It depends where the board meeting falls in the month and where we are being able to close out.
So next, next to me would be the first time for this fiscal year that we would see a various report?
Yes, we wait until we have a quarter to, uh, to review.
Thank you. Okay, sure. Uh, next we have unfinished business. And first, we have 2020 Proposed Tax Levy and Truth in Taxation Resolution. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution, which sets forth the amount of $241,00690,000 as the proposed 2020 levy for the Township High School District 211 and directs publication of a notice of public hearing and the proposed levy at its meeting to be held on December 10, 2020. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. Um, tonight, the District 211 Board of Education is asked to extend our property taxes by 2.74%. At the last meeting, when this was presented, there was discussion that this is reasonable and should be expected to keep up with the cost of living. As the price of bread increases, so does the cost to the taxpayer to run a school district. When we look at this a little closer, in 2010, the property tax collected from our community was $190,651,933. Inflation from 2010 to 2020 is 19.4%. The resulting levy adjusted for inflation would be $227,638,408. Tonight, the Board of Education vote on the recommended levy is $241,690,000. This is 24.35% as an increase over the 2010 levy. This is 4.95% more than a levy indexed for inflation. This is $14,515,92 more dollars than what the property taxpayers should expect to pay. If this levy was justified only by inflationary costs, how do we get to this point in just a decade? Unfortunately, we, the Board of Education, continue to act under PTAL laws, tax cap, as if this is an entitlement and not a threshold to stay below. Increasing property taxes by $6,421,343 for our district that over the past decade has systematically achieved an annual taxation $14,515,92 over the rate of inflation is insulting and self-destructive to our most vulnerable community members that are struggling to maintain employment, pay rent, and/or feed their family during a deadly pandemic. If the current situation impacting our community is not enough reason to pause, what will it take? Honestly, ask yourselves, are we approving a property tax increase based on clearly demonstrated anticipated needs for the district? Or are we just rubber-stamping an entitled increase that drains our community of vital resources for a larger annual surplus and a fat fund balance? We're already 5% beyond inflation. When will we make a correction on behalf of our community? Why wait until we're 10%, 15%, or 20% above inflation? We should be acting tonight.
Any other comments?
Look, Ms. Klimkowitz, were you gonna make?
No.
Yeah, I, I do. Ms. Hummel, can you remind me how the CPI and growth component were calculated for the, for the levy?
CPI is released by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. So it is a national rate that is, um, released and is, um, in January for the prior calendar year. And that, so that is the rate of 2.3%. The rate of new property growth is, um, on average, the district has seen about 0.4% new property growth on an annual basis, and that is for, um, new developments changing and, uh, valuation through our immediate community. And we have the 300th of a percent that is attributed directly to the expiration of a TIFT of SIRF in Calton.
So who gives us the number for CPI?
It's the Bureau of Labor Statistics.
What, do they give that number to us after December 31st, when that is determined? Or do they-
No, we are using last year's CPI. So it was the CPI from 2019 that was released in January of 2020.
Okay, so we know, we know specifically what that number is. Uh, well, editorial here. Uh, right now, Schaumburg Palatine has 9% unemployment. Commercial and industrial vacancies are growing. How many, you've been to Woodfield lately, okay? There, there, there's a pretty high vacancy rate because nobody's shopping, because the economy, the, the economic situation is probably the worst since the Great Depression. The other, and the other point in here is that while there is certainly a very, very harsh impact on the homeowner and the families, it's even more devastating for commercial and industrial property. Okay, they, they, they're, they're calculated, I think, about three times the, the, their assessed value. And so they pay a disproportionately high percentage of the property taxes. If it wasn't for Woodfield and the industrial base, uh, in, in Schaumburg Township, we could not afford to do what we are doing. And by levying, by continuing to increase the levy to PTAL, you are hurting those businesses, you are killing the golden goose that is really paying for, for what District 211 is. Again, we, we are in the worst economic situation or crisis this country has seen since the Great Depression. If there's any time for this school district to do their part, it's now and not raise taxes. I find it unconscionable to raise taxes in this environment.
Any other comments?
I made my comments about this budget I feel clear last month. I appreciate that this budget includes an abatement. I expect that discussion to happen as promised. And I believe that that abatement, as well as the debt-free status of the district, which is almost singular in the state of Illinois, and which has the effect of lowering property taxes because we don't issue a debt service levy, and the responsible fiscal management of the resources in order to provide a very high quality of service that the communities who use our school system expect, I believe that this budget, more so than last year's budget, which was levy to PTAL with no abatement and then follow-through with a, you know, an extra $5 million payment to IMRF, I believe this budget does reflect the pressures that Mr. Kramer and Mr. Dombrowski speak of and that we are all aware of. Now, obviously, I, you know, Mr. Dombrowski and Mr. Kramer and I are not going to fall on the same line of what is a reasonable compromise. At the same time, I still maintain that I appreciate the levy, I appreciate the abatement that was included in this budget package that brings that number, uh, much closer, so, you know, to $239 million as opposed to the term 40-some-million number that we heard, you know, on the effort before. So, um, and the way that the law is written, the main impetus for me, aside from the fact that the abatement was included in this budget, which I very much appreciate, the, the, the main impetus is that the way that the law is written, you know, whenever we don't levy to PTAL, we, you know, we can sit here in this terrible situation with a pandemic and a healthy budget-looking now, but as was demonstrated in the last meeting, if we don't levy to PTAL, just the way that the law is written, we can't, those losses are never recoverable. So it's not just a one-year loss like a business would be. That's not how finances work for a school district. That loss is, is not recoverable, and then it compounds into the future. So what seems like a small hole in the bucket now never gets plugged. And 10 years, 15 years down the line, that hole is very, very big, and a lot of water's fallen out. And then we're in a situation where the district, a, a different board, I'm not going to be on that board, is sitting here having to issue debt service bonds and, and having to ask for- having to ask the community for a referendum. You know, so, again, it's a balancing act. The fact is that education isn't free. You know, this is a, this is a public good, and it's publicly funded, but at the same time, we have to recognize that the public is under a certain amount of pressure as well. So that's what I feel like this budget does. You know, it maintains the finances that we need in order to deliver the kind of service that all of our families are demanding, and at the same time, it does recognize the fact that expenses are going up, the cost of bread is going up, and wages are not for many, many people in our communities now. So, you know, how I felt about the budget last month, how I feel about the budget this month.
This is not the budget, this is the levy.
Yes, the levy.
You're right, there's a difference. The other thing is that the $2 million abatement that you're talking about is not in the resolution. If that was in the resolution, it might be different, but if you're going to abate it, why not, why not right now not raise the taxes and now, and then abate it later? Okay. Then, a related question, did the land sale close today?
It did.
So there's another $17 million in here that the district, that is a windfall to the district. This, we're asking too much money when we have more than enough money.
Our budget is at a deficit this year. I know that we're talking about the levy, but these things are interrelated. We talked about this at the last month.
Right, but we just got $17 million.
Some of which is going to be used to cover the deficit in the budget.
There could be, there's, there could be an argument to say, the 4.5 million bucks that we were over, that we were in, surplus revenue, okay, that we were, 4.5 million dollars surplus, plus the 17 million, that's around 20, 24, 25 million dollars, I'm sorry, 21 million dollars. Why not, why not abate it or keep the tax, keep, not increase the taxes to account for that 21 million dollars?
From memory, there's a $9 million deficit in the budget, so that's part of it. And I've already explained why I don't agree with you.
Well, obviously not.
No.
That's why there's a vote.
So I have a couple of comments. Number one is to Ms. Cavill's point, there's a difference between an abatement and a levy.
Understand that.
So to say, we just got $17 million, so why don't we take that out of the levy? Or why don't we reduce the levy because we have all this other money? The prolonged impact of that on our school district and our community and the services that we can provide is impacted for perpetuity. So an abatement is a one-time relief, so to speak, for the community. I personally am impacted by an employment situation. So I am feeling the effect of this pandemic and the impact that taxes are having and expenses are having on me and my family. So, you know, not every board member is directly impacted. Our constituents certainly are, and I personally am and can empathize with that and feel for the financial and economic negativity that our community is experiencing right now. This proposal is to approve a proposed, this resolution is to approve a proposed tax levy. It's not to approve the tax levy. Let's not mistake that, okay? This is not an approval of the tax levy that will now go into effect. It's an approval of a proposed tax levy, which will go on publication to the public for a hearing, discussion, and vote next month.
So you're open to changing your mind?
So this is an opportunity for us to say, this is what we want to do. Now, public, let's hear from you on your thoughts on the details that we're sharing with you now, and we're going to consider to discuss and finalize next month. So we're not voting to approve the levy tonight. That's next month. But right now, we're voting to approve the proposed levy for public access and a hearing to take place next month. And what I encourage the public to do that are listening or want to share with their friends and family, and I can share with others as well, is to give us input on their thoughts based on their analysis of our financial situation.
I would like to add something, maybe just a little bit of history, and Dr. Small may have to help me out here. Over the years, we did do about $30 million in abatements. I think that was kind of the amount.
$33 million.
Okay, $33 million. And if I'm correct, I believe we were the first school district to be doing that, and that was a savings for the community. So we have taken that into account, and we have worked on that. And I think it's important to recognize that, that we did have that consideration, we did have that foresight, we did have that planning, and that was really important. And one of the things that was important to the, to the prior board was to not have the working cash and to be able to have enough funds of, not to sell bonds, but to have enough cash available so we can maintain our schools. And I think that that's really important. And I know I've said this before about the million, 17 million from the sale. I truly feel that the intent of that land was for the use of the school, for the students. I'd really like to see those funds being utilized in our buildings to meet the needs of the students, and maybe in the long run, it does accommodate our community also. So that's just my point, that we have been doing the abatements, we've done it for a number of years, so there have been cost savings.
I guess the only thing I want to add is to build on Mr. Rosenbloom's offer to hear from people. The interesting part is, it wouldn't be about the finances. It would be about the qualities that you want from, from the school district. Because we don't have to levy at all. People just come in and tell us what things you get out of the school district that you're okay not getting out of the school district anymore. And if we hear that, the quality discussion, and we make the list, and we have the list from 2005, it was about $18 million back then before the referendum passed. $18 million of things that we weren't going to have anymore if the referendum didn't pass. But it passed because the community said they wanted to retain those qualities. The levy is important because of what it provides. It's not the finances and the mathematics and the money. Of course, people have to pay for the qualities that we provide. But even this, with the abatement, if you end up abating $2 million, you might as well decide today which of the five schools you don't want to have here in 25 years. Because 25 years of $2 million closes a school. That's $50 million. And it won't be the people on this board that have to deal with that issue. It'll be the people that are here five, 10, 15, and 20 years from now. The first thing that'll happen a few years out, you'll start deferring maintenance, you'll slow down capital expenditures. Five years after that, you'll start looking around and to say, the facilities don't look the same anymore, they're not very appealing. It'll have a cultural impact on your students, your family members, your community members. After that, you'll say, we can't stop the bleeding anymore, and you'll say, let's issue bonds. And you go back to pre-2005 numbers, when like in 2002, you were levying $10 million a year for debt service. We don't have that anymore. The financial position of the district today is a result of something that began before 2005. And in 2005, the community affirmed the plan to set this district square financially. It is now stable, the behavior is sustainable, and the choices are replicable. If you continue those behaviors, you can maintain the qualities that you have. If you don't, you will not have the same quality here in the future. That's okay. If that's what the community wants, bring the list of the things that you don't want here anymore. I fully support that approach. But to sit here and talk about the financial mathematics, we are likely unprecedented in the entire state, including the state, on our financial position. That's where we are. We're here because the district has chosen to behave that way, and the community set us squarely on that path 15 years ago. I supported it then, I support our behaviors today, and I support all the quality things that we have here today. And I think you are going to expect more from the district in the future, not less, and it is irrespective of the economic conditions of the community. People demand more from us. People are demanding kids to be back in school. Board members are demanding kids to be back in school. The superintendent is trying to deliver that to the best extent we can. Nobody's asking for less. They want more. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Nay.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Next, we have a proposed new policy, Title IX Sexual Harassment and Grievance Policy. The suggested motion is that the board policy file, GAD JB KAB, Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Policy, be updated as proposed and included in the board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Point of clarification, are these first readings or are these just changes that we're providing?
So for this one, this is not the first reading?
Are any of these a first reading?
So you're, you're, we're in unfinished business, item B, first of all. We're not in the list where there's a whole bunch of them.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I'm off, you're right. Okay, got it. I see, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
All right, next, we have Illinois Association of School Boards' Resolutions 2020. Is there any further discussion here, or questions, or clarifications, or?
Once again, I've attended two discussion rounds and debates with other delegates from across the state on all the resolutions and other items up before the delegate assembly. The delegate assembly is scheduled to take place Saturday, this coming Saturday, November 14th. So I am voting on behalf of our school board. The question is not whether I agree with the school board or not, but the majority of the school board is how I am voting. So if you have any concerns or questions, again, I'll ask, please let me know now, tomorrow, I think that's it, or before 10:00 a.m. on Saturday. Let me know if you have any concerns, questions, want to express to me your vote on any of the resolutions up before the delegate assembly, so I can take those into consideration as I represent this board.
Are we voting on any of these resolutions tonight, or?
It is not a requirement that we vote as a board. If the board would like to do that on any particular resolution that may be up for voting on behalf of this board, I welcome that as well.
I would like to see a vote on Resolution Number Two, the gun storage.
So everyone should have a copy in your agenda of the resolutions, and probably easiest would be to look on the one that is titled, Illinois Association of School Boards' Proposed Resolutions 2020, the one that has IASB all fully written out, because that gives a summation of the resolution. And Number Two is gun storage. And we've heard from several members in the community, as well as conversations between ourselves, about Resolution Number Two, which is around gun storage. And I'll read it here briefly, so everyone, including the public, has knowledge, although it's on the agenda. Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate for legislation which strengthens child-safe gun storage laws in the state of Illinois, requiring gun owners to store firearms, whether they are loaded or unloaded, in a securely locked container if a person under the age of 18 is likely to gain access to the weapon without permission. The resolutions committee recommends do not adopt. The committee questioned whether association resources should be spent on a noneducational issue rather than an issue that deals directly with concerns inside a school. The majority of the committee felt this was not an issue for IASB's involvement. At this point, I'd like to open it for discussion. Does anybody want to comment or discuss it further?
So why don't we take the motion, Mr. Young wants a motion to approve this resolution?
Yes.
That is the motion. Do we have someone that wants to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Now, discussion.
What are we approving?
The resolution right here.
Okay, the resolution.
He just read it, you have the material.
Can I finish my question, please? The resolution states that the IASB does not want to approve Resolution Number Two. Is that correct?
That is not correct. The resolution is right here.
That is. That, that is correct, the resolution.
No, that's not a part of the resolution. The resolution is what Mr. Rosenbloom read.
Oh, so we're voting on the resolution, not the recommendation of the IASB?
Right, yes. Yes, that will be crystal clear. What Mr. Young has moved, that we would approve that resolution. So it would be as if we were in the position of the IASB, and however we vote then, presumably that will provide exactly the guidance Mr. Rosenbloom needs.
So what I would like to know is, does this board approve?
We have the motion. We have the motion. The motion is before the board. It is to approve that resolution, nothing different.
Okay, I'm going to speak. Being part of the resolution committee, there was quite a bit of discussion in regards to this. I do not agree with the resolution as it is. I agree about gun safety, I agree about all the necessary things. However, I would like to point out that we do have belief statements, and the belief statements that are in, you know, our position books, address issues that are not directly educationally related. If you look at belief statement number eight, which is maybe where this request should have been placed, belief statement eight states, "The Illinois Association of School Boards believes in the vigorous support and the rigid enforcement of laws pertaining to the sale, possession, and or use of firearms." That may have been a more accurate place to put this. I believe that, you know, we all support gun safety, we all support keeping our kids safe, we all support, well, I do, I shouldn't speak for anybody else here, I support some stronger enforcement of some of the gun laws. However, I think that with our belief statement, that could have been incorporated in there, and our people who are part of the IASB, our lobbyists, could support that position. They do right now with our belief statements, so they can address that, they can address, you know, probably the gun locks. So I do not support the resolution as it was presented. I support with the recommendation of the resolution committee, which is do not adopt. I support what the recommendation of the Resolution Committee, which is do not adopt.
And I'm, I'm just going to reiterate, we spend tens of thousands of dollars to be members of this organization, and I, I would rather have our resources used for something that is going to have a direct impact to District 211 if we're going to continue this. Our local representatives, Representative Musman, Morrison, Crespo, our senators, Murphy, they're all accessible. They, they can go to the House floor with legislation to make this change a lot quicker than having our community come to us, then us go to IASB, and then IASB go to the legislator. Why do we have two middlemen when we, when we have very accessible state representatives? So from my opinion, I'm, I think this is a waste of time.
Any other comments?
So I will comment that Representative Musman did acknowledge there is legislation before the Springfield at this time, but it is not expected to be voted upon or, or further discussed until 2021. So there is legislation that is in front of the legislators around this issue as well.
I just think voting in favor of it just give a better impact that we are supporting gun control. And I think that's, you know, that's an important issue regardless of whether the, you know, state legislature finally passes it, of which he's talking about passing it next year.
So, so I understand what you're saying is that a yes vote supports gun control or does not support?
No, a yes vote supports this resolution.
Which is gun control?
Well, the resolution is before you. It needs no characterization or reverbalization by any board member. This is the resolution.
Whatever, really.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstain.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Yes.
Mr. LaFever?
No. So the motion fails, but you will still represent us. Thank you. Any other questions about other IASB resolutions before we move on? Okay, that will bring us to new business. First item here is board member expenses. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursement for Mrs. Klimkowitz to attend the Illinois Association of School Boards Virtual Summit, November 202020, as submitted. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Passed.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
And then I, I will vote aye.
Your time to vote was when your roll call occurred.
A pass means that, that the vote comes, comes back to me. I passed.
Mr. Kramer?
Next item of business, proposed new policy, nondiscrimination statement. So this starts the point of your question. So these are all first readings this time, but if you could repeat your question, I don't remember what it was. But these are now all first readings.
Usually in the agenda, there's a note that says first reading, and I didn't see that in front, so I, I didn't realize that it was under new business, that your response was correct. Thank you.
So in general, though, if it's possible, could we hear from Mr. Schumacher a little context and summary to capture the essence of addressing all of them, which I think will help provide some context to what you want to know?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
At the last meeting and at this meeting, we brought forth the new Title IX Sexual Harassment Grievance Policy, which was in response to the Department of Education releasing their new Title IX regulations on May 6, 2020. The implications of that new policy is the sexual harassment was tied to multiple other policies, as was verbiage that needed to be changed as a result of the new policy. So in reviewing all the 300 or so policies that we had, there were noted that, I believe there's seven of them here, that were tied to them. And so within that came out a few things. Number one, the creation of a new nondiscrimination statement, which is a first rate for you tonight, and that's required by the Office of Civil Rights. And so the one you have in front of you is actually the combination of two previous policies together, and it's strengthened, and it's included new regulations that need to be in there. It also includes a modification of the Uniform Grievance Policy. And what is created with this then are there, the Uniform Grievance Policy covers any complaint that would be made, but then on top of that is a harassment, including sexual harassment policy, which is also on here, and that's the combination of a former separate harassment policy and a former separate sexual harassment policy into one. And then there's a, there's, we can then make a few removals of the old policies, which were almost too narrow in the scope that we had them, and now we can broaden the category and include additional information that needs to be included as a result of the legislation that has been passed since they were last moved in.
I'm going to provide a little additional context, a couple fundamental things. So the Title IX one that we just approved, at the, at the very beginning of all this stuff, the essence of our conversation in the committee was, if something is a violation of sexual harassment, does that mean it had to already violate just simple fundamental harassment? The answer to that was yes. So we can't have sexual harassment ever if we didn't have harassment in general. Second, the sexual harassment thing under Title IX sets forth a very specific set of procedural requirements that the administration has to follow. Those procedural requirements, in some instances, are different from our own procedural requirements that in many cases, if not all, are already much more substantial than the Title IX stuff. The bar is lower to trip and have a problem with that. So we discussed that a lot and reconciled those issues a lot because we wanted to be clear that just because you were going down the path of satisfying the Title IX sexual harassment thing didn't absolve you from satisfying the board's already existing policies under just general harassment stuff and those procedures. So both procedures would happen concurrently, or if somehow they became unified, as, as we consider the other policies and what's included in there, that would be addressed. Those are some of the overarching concepts that we've been talking about related to these things. Mrs. Klimkowitz, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you've summed it up quite well.
Now that I said that, does that trigger anything that I missed?
No, I think between my introduction and then you clarifying those pieces, I think it comes, unless there's other questions.
Just, just really quickly, just glancing through, I noticed we, we stricken the portion that said complaints regarding the superintendent will be noticed to the Board of Education. Is there a specific reference to the superintendent or?
Which one are you looking at where you see that?
Right now, I'm, I'm looking at the revision to, bear with me really quick, Uniform Grievance Policy File, GAC/JA/KAA.
Which, which letter of the, the new business section is it? Could you do that? So I.
Um, we may have already just voted then. I was just following it through.
Ted D.
Yeah, Item D.
D?
Yeah.
And is there a line number, I'm sorry, Mr. Dombrowski, that you can reference on that?
I think, yeah, I think it was, that's the administration. I'm not making any insinuations on Dr. Small, I just, you never know who we hired on the road. Was that replaced with language somewhere else or procedure somewhere else?
Yes.
I'll look through that.
It's replaced with, I believe, on line 205.
205.
Or 178.
Okay, hold on. Thank you for your patience. Okay, okay, so it's moved there. Thank you.
Yeah. But this is a first reading, so you have plenty of time.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. In, in general, are there any questions about any of these? We'll just kind of wrap up all of them all at once unless somebody has a question about one of them, and I won't go through each one individually. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
No, yeah, I think everything's good. I, I think there were minor changes to the bullying policy. I, I looked through these earlier, and it's been a, it's been a few days, but yeah. Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, so that takes us all the way through Item H. So then that will bring us to Item I, potential topics for future discussion. Do we have anything here?
I don't know if this is the appropriate place or not, but I just would like clarification as to where are we with Dr. Small's recommendation? Because I don't, I'm coming out of this board meeting without clarification. Are we going with the recommendation? Are we asking for more information? Are we revising it to Mrs. Klimkowitz's suggestion? Are we taking no action? What are we doing?
There is no action to take because the superintendent has the authority to follow our original, original resolution from back in July. Is that your understanding, Dr. Small?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next, that will bring us to committee reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization and Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Okay, I, I will be very brief because it's getting quite late. We did have our meeting in person, and Dr. Hackett did provide us with some information on reengage in the learning plan, you know, 2020, 2021, and I will ask Ms. Bauer if we could make copies of it, or excuse me, scan it in and send it out to you so it'll give you an update on what's going on with NSSCO. And as the communication that we've received from Dr. Small and also from Dr. Hackett, they're going back to the e-learning because of, it started with, with Kirk School and with Minor and now Timber Ridge because of the number of students that have COVID and the number of teachers and the ability to staff. And, well, the susceptibility of a, of a lot of the students, parents have chosen to kind of keep them home a little bit longer. So right now, everything is, is the e-learning through the, through the NSSCO.
Thank you. All right. Next is Education Research Development Legislative Report, and I believe it'll be Ms. Hummel.
Thank you. The meeting last Friday had a guest speaker, who was Ralph Marskey, who's the Executive Director for Social Tax and Budget Accountability. His presentation centered around the impact of the failure of the Fair Tax and its impact on the state of Illinois. Really, he spent a lot of time going through an analysis of the state's budget for the current year and next year with some historical and future trend projections, and looked at, kind of gave a breakout on both revenue and expenditures. On the expenditure side, about 96% of the budget and expenses aligned with education, health, and social services. And, but then, not significant increases in, in any of those areas, in fact, some decreases across the board. But on the revenue side, that's where he kind of focused his presentation and the information, due to a decline, and a lot of it is very specific to the health pandemic with regard to decreased sales tax, income tax, and the state also has a carryover deficit from last year. So his analysis just shared that without the Fair Tax passing, that there was, that deficit continues to grow and carryover from other unrelated expenses, but then we do not have the revenue that was built in from the Fair Tax. He did show some projections for increased funding for education over the years and predicts that there would not be adequate funding to continue to support evidence-based funding 10 years out from now, due to just shortfalls in revenue altogether.
Thank you. That will bring us to Partners for Community Evening, Community Services.
I can share information. The community partners have been sharing information between each other about the services that they are providing to create greater awareness across the greater area of resources that are available for families in need. They were poised to begin formulating a return to normalcy in terms of onsite programs and supports, however, that has been interrupted by some of the current health conditions. So we just continue to look forward to a positive shift and then begin initiating more of the typical programming that we have become accustomed to out of the Higgins Education
All right. Thank you. That will bring us to our announcements. We have our upcoming events and calendar items.
Real quick on that, just a reminder that the day after tomorrow, I'll be attending the delegate assembly on behalf of this board and our school district.
All right. And finally, I think all we have left are motions from closed session items. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of William Gillen-Gurten, effective June 2021, according to the master contract of the District 21 Operations Maintenance Group, and Kimberly Lundquist, effective May 2022, according to the master contract of the District 21 United Support Staff. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. All right. If there's nothing further, we are adjourned.